Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our budget workshop session, February eighteenth. Patty, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. This is Barrett here, Fish Campbell here, Nancy Claver here, Fifth Clues, Brian French here, Lee Hudson, Byron Mato here, Carrie Nolte here, Lisa Rappaport here, Eric Moore, Jason Delaney.
Thank you, Patty. I will turn this over to Zach.
So, uh, well, after, uh, our worked at Matty's here to talk through special education, I think you know, we've talked something before that we're up, one point seven million operating expenses, not IT, uh, one point three million of that is connected to, uh, special education and a, and a good chunk of that is connected to added disreplacements. Um, so as we were, as we're going through the kind of some of the, um, set pieces to bring people in to talk to you, we thought it was, this was another important area for you, for you to have some conversation about. Uh, make sure you understood kind of, uh, ins and outs of how kind of, uh, sped finance works, uh, and what is, uh, towards that you can, um, help you out, also understand what's going on right now for us as we're, uh, as we're dealing with the, the needs of kids. Um, I will say too, after, um, Rick goes through all his stuff and we wrap up all that, I also want to give you an update on kind of our kind of processing of the, of the guidance from city council and what we're doing to try to come back to you with some potential potential plans to try and meet some of what city council is asking us to do, uh, and, and, um, what we timeline is for us to be able to do that. So, but Rick is here, uh, we're happy to have him and he'll walk you through his stuff and Rick, do you want to questions as you go, questions at the end? How would you like to?
Oh, you know, questions as we go is fine. And then, you know, definitely questions at the end as well. You know, and if we get, if there's a question and I think it's going to be answered later on the slide, then I'll just defer that question to later on in the presentation. And if it doesn't get answered, we could definitely do it after the phone. So.
First question, can we put the heat back on or like, I don't know if it's finally got really cold in here. I don't know if it's this.
Maybe the door is opening.
Gets cold.
Just the different carry over there.
Yeah.
Yes, you are right.
We're gonna be snuggled up. Um, yeah, I can use a blanket.
Yeah, for.
But I can also switch it on myself because I, you know, I know how to do that.
They're all really hard.
How to close the window so that it doesn't.
It's nailed shut, which is a disappointment.
If we get hot, you know, we'll make some adjustments after.
Right.
And you have this.
Rick, thank you for being here.
Oh, I'm glad to answer. So, yep, my name is Rick Mady. I am the director of people support and instruction for Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm really happy to be here tonight and to have this, uh, experience and presentation with all of you. So we're going to focus, my presentation is going to focus on special education finance. Or so, I think the.
He's gonna warm up and just.
Yeah. So it is on here.
It's in your board pack. Come on away, Patty.
Uh, it should be linked, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the agenda.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
I'm just surprised that Patty was surprised with all the slides.
What is special education funding?
That's the first question. Let's get on the winner. Who's controlling the?
Patty's, Patty's pulling it up, I think.
The camera?
Yeah.
Camera's auto. It, it detects sound and it moves down in movement and it moves to.
Like a raptor.
It moves to that, yeah.
Better, better do a good presentation.
Thanks, Patty.
That's nice.
Hey, you can go to the second slide. So basically, yes, what is special education funding? That's, I figured that would be the best way to start this presentation off. So next slide, Patty. Thank you. Essentially, answer to that question is it's financial resources for students with disabilities identified under the individual, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, okay? Commonly referred to as IDEA. It's really not referred to as idea, just to kind of put that out there at the beginning of the presentation, which is referred to as the IDEA. Um, and just this slide will get a little bit of a background in special ed, then we'll get much deeper into the financial part. So IDEA is really the federal law of the land regarding students with disabilities. Um, it's an enormously incredibly important law. Essentially, what it does is it ensures that students with disabilities have equal access and equal opportunity to their public education. It also ensures and promotes inclusion so that students with disabilities are educated to the greatest extent um, with students that don't have disabilities. It also ensures that there's parent involvement, that there's a protective bill of rights for the student and the family. Um, and it also really supports the school. The IDEA supports the school in terms of financial resources, which we'll talk about in a minute. Um, but it also really provides guidelines and general understandings of our obligations as a public school district. So I just can't underscore that enough is how important the IDEA is. Um, so the next kind of acronym that I'll use is IEP. And when I say a student with a disability, I'm essentially referring to a student with an IEP. And an IEP is an individualized education. So it's essentially a plan that is, um, tailored to the needs, the challenges, and the strengths of a student with a disability. It has measurable goals. It has service provisions. It has measurable objectives. It has, uh, it's legal, it's a legal document, so it's binding in that sense. And there's also transition planning for high school students with disabilities going into it. So those are the major components of an IEP. The IDEA says that we have to educate students in the least restrictive environment for that particular student. So that's really case by case. It may be different for different people. But they strongly, they require us to provide that least restrictive educational environment, which is essentially also promoting inclusion of the IDEA, which says to the greatest extent possible, students with disabilities need to be educated alongside of students without disabilities. The IDEA also says that we must provide a FAP to students with disabilities. So what is a FAP? A FAP is a free and appropriate public education. So that may be different depending on the needs of the students and the student's disability. But every student in public school, um, is entitled to a FAP. And it's our job to do that. There's a tremendous amount of compliance with the IDEA and it's monitored closely by the folks in Concord. So the folks in Concord, they don't really, they don't even call me and ask about IEP enforcement. They can go in and look. They don't, they just go into the system and it's a shared interface. And they can go in and they make sure that we are in compliance in a number of different ways. And if we meet compliance under the IDEA, then we get grant dollars. So you can go to the next slide. So I'll talk about the grant in a minute. But essentially in special ed, there are three really important revenues that I want to talk about. So this is money that's coming in to support our school system. The first is the IDEA grant. Okay, I have a, I have a slide on that coming up. I'll talk about that a little bit more. The second major revenue source is also federal. And that's the Medicaid to schools act. And I'll talk about that specifically as well. And then the third major driver for revenue in special ed is a state function called special ed aid. Up until, I think, two years ago, it was called catastrophic aid. And in a way, I liked that name because it really talked about, you know, the weighted financial impact of what's going on here. Um, but they did change it to special education aid. So you, and it was a relatively recent change, so you may hear, hear both of those terms being, you know, being used. So I'll go through each one of those three revenue sources. The IDEA grant. Okay, how does this work? Essentially, if we stay in compliance with all of our IEPs, we get an annual grant. The grant, um, is written in May and June somewhere, somewhere in there. I write the grant. Um, and the grant runs for eighteen months. So we complete the grant once a year in May or June. And then we have eighteen months to spend that down to zero. And what, when I write the grant, it plans out pretty much that whole allotment of money. Um, so when you think about it, if you do the grant every year and it runs for eighteen months, we always have two major grants going at the same time. We try to spend the old money first. Once we finish that, we spend the, the newer money. There's two parts to the grant. The one part is for kindergarten through grade twelve. And that's just shy of six hundred thousand dollars. Other part is part B. That's the preschool part of the IDEA grant. And that's close to fourteen thousand dollars, so quite a bit less.
Good question. Is that like set in stone? Is it the same amount?
Good question.
So like, how is that money based on?
You know, there's a formula in Concord. And in my years of doing this, not just at Portsmouth, but other places too, I've never seen it go up. I've only seen it go down. And Brian may be able to talk more about the funding formula.
It changes, having a, down to a science, I can tell you one, but it doesn't, he's right, it doesn't go up.
It doesn't drop drastically either, Trish, but it seems to go down incrementally. And I know it's somehow tied to enrollment. And with enrollment decreasing overall in New Hampshire, I think we're seeing this create.
Full enrollment, not specialized enrollment.
Yeah, full, yeah. Um, so the important part here is the K to twelve part, the, the, the big chunk of money can be spent on preschool. So I should probably put pre-K to twelve because that amount is inclusive of preschool. The fourteen thousand dollar amount for preschool can only be used for preschool. There's a lot of grant rules, but those are kind of two big ones that I wanted to bring up. Another big part of the IDEA grant is it can only be spent exclusively on students with disabilities. If I had a grant idea that would be good for kids with and without disabilities, it's not going to fly. It's not going to work. They reject. It has to be exclusively for, for children with disabilities in our schools. It's a pretty lengthy revision process. It goes back and forth between myself and the grant reviewer in Concord. But overall, it comes down to about six teachers. Um, they're all K through twelve. Comes out to a fair amount of equipment and a fair amount of instructional or curriculum materials. So that's one big revenue source for special ed, the IDEA.
Where did the, where did the money go?
That went to, it went primarily to equipment and instructional equipment. So that's the grant.
Right, when this was first instituted, like in the nineteen seventies or something, wasn't it supposed to pay for like ninety-five percent of your special ed costs? And every year it goes dwindles down, but like you said, it's, you've never seen it go up at all. Like, you know, the federal government was supposed to fund.
By the hundred percent.
Yeah.
I mean, it's only a fraction of that. Absolutely. Um, so flipping to the next slide. Okay, Medicaid to schools revenue. So how does this work? Essentially, students with disabilities that require non-instructural services allow us to get reimbursed for those non-instructural services. So sometimes students with disability, speech, OT, physical therapy, or they have to see the nurse, or they take a special bus to school, or they have counseling, all of those non-instructural activities are able to, we, we can recover reimbursable dollars for those. Um, and we do, we, we go after every dollar that we can. Basically, the people in the field, so the speech pathologists, the OT, all the practitioners, they fill out detailed logs and they submit them to the central office here at City Hall. And then me and Christine, really talented person I work with, he worked to get that reimbursement for Portsmouth. For FY twenty-four, we submitted about one point five million and we received just a, just shy of six hundred thousand.
Why the shortfall?
You know, there's, again, there's a formula where they only fund so much of it. Um, and that's what.
They don't reimburse one percent. Yeah.
Yeah, I get that, but is like, have we looked at like our data as far as what's being rejected and maybe tweaks or whatnot? I mean, I know you guys are probably so busy in the positions that you're in covering and all of that. So knowing that that's the amount, you know, nine hundred thousand dollars that we're potentially missing out on. Is there, like, is there a potential there? Are they saying, oh, we're going to do a certain percent? Or are we, you know, are the OT staff not, you know, crossing some Ts and dotting some Is on certain things that could help us jump to the next point? Like, have we looked at what's being rejected versus accepted and?
It's not rejections. Like I said, I was just on a call, uh, with our state business administrators across the state the other, uh, last week. That six hundred thousand dollars is one of the highest you're going to see. Reason being is because we the efficiency of the person that's doing it. As you can see, that's the salary of the person who's doing it, sixty-seven thousand. Getting back almost ten times then. So that's a great investment. City of Dover, they're getting forty thousand dollars. Wow. And they are a lot bigger than us. So we're actually operating at a pretty efficient level right now. And there's, there are cities, uh, bigger cities than us that are using that kind of money because what it takes for paperwork and organization and submitting and keeping on them. Um, some people use a third-party service, which actually end up getting less back and you have more errors. You actually have less errors, you get more back from paying a third-party service to do that. So we're actually operating at a much, much, uh, higher efficiency level with most, most schools across the state.
What's the delay from like spending?
It's, well, I mean, it's not, it's not immediate, but it's, um, we'll still be, we'll be, we're already received our funds for last year. But it kind of won't.
But it trickles behind. But it's, it trickles in as you put it in.
Yes.
So it showed me clear though, my answer is no, like, nobody's ever looked at the data to say out of these nine hundred thousand dollars that we've submitted, these are the particular reasons that they're getting rejected.
This person's basically their full-time job.
Yeah.
Is to do that. That's.
Okay.
Um, so we, I don't, I don't pick through that stuff, uh, but we have somebody who can do it this.
Well, it sounds like they're submitting them, but we don't.
So that's not.
Mechanism to know what's being rejected and why.
We do, we do have a consultant. And I meet with that person three times a year. His name's attorney Dan Corner. And he meets with me, Christine, as well as the people in the field, our professional staff in the schools to make sure that we're doing it right. So the Medicaid to schools act has gone through seismic changes the last five years. And I really give Portsmouth a ton of credit for staying with those changes and moving with the tides. Because like Brian has said, there's much, there's bigger cities that get less money because it's a lot of work. And, um, the people at our schools are doing that real heavy lift by filling out logs.
I'm saying, there's a conversation when you talk to the people who are district leaders, uh, that, um, there are folks who are like, they have made a decision that it's not worth pursuing some of these funds. So, so intensive and the expertise needed to do all that stuff, right? Not just in this individual position, but having staff properly trained to do all the things we need to do, cross the Ts and dot the Is, so that we'd be eligible. I, this is not, I don't think this is, this is not a shortfall. We're feeling really good about that. Excellent. We'll be happier. Um, so there are definitely districts, though, small, definitely ones of smaller size, surely. We just don't have the capacity to even chase those dollars. And so they just leave them on the table. Uh, so.
And Brian, Byron, and then Lisa.
So the position, the administrative assistant position is writing these grants. From my understanding, the cost, social justice cost center, that's this. Reading is a new position, but.
Not writing the grant. Monitoring spending in the grants. So she monitors spending.
And she orders some materials for the schools. But she doesn't write the grant.
I'm trying to think, Brian, in terms of where Christine lives.
And right now she's in two oh seven.
Right now.
This particular motion.
Yeah.
And we'll drive two oh seven.
Ah. It's not a new, so she's not a new, it's not a new position, but she's new to fund eleven slash global budget.
New fund eleven.
So I but she's worked here for a while. Just has been with.
You know, she's, she's a real leader in the state around Medicaid to schools. Other districts call us to get advice on how to best get those.
She charges us advice.
So nine hundred thousand dollars, you're right there.
They actually invited her to attend a national conference, the oops, the Department of, asked her to attend the national conference in Colorado to talk about experiences. And she wasn't able to go, but it was frightening to be, to be asked.
Okay, what cost center you have a question? Lisa has a question. What is it? Sorry, what cost center is this in now?
Central office.
Central. What number is that?
One seventy.
I was gonna ask the same thing about where it was, but I think my other question, which is probably unknowable at this time, is there is a movement in DC that I'm sure you're familiar with to just entirely remove this funding? You know, there's movement in the state to redefine special ed so that it wouldn't cover related services. And I'm just curious, as we're doing this budget right now, we can't know where this is going to land, but is anybody like trying to gas or talk to the city about? You know, because a lot of this is massive amounts of money. We can't control it. It could be a coin toss.
We've been pretty steady on what we're bringing in for Medicaid for the last several years. Revenue is harder to estimate than expenses, but, uh, looking at historically, we're, we are historically at about five hundred thousand.
And you, and it's hard, you gotta build in a, realistically, we build in a, a little bit of a buffer. We're conservative, we think the revenue is coming in so we can be pleasantly surprised on the other side. And on your, I think your question was more about the seismic.
For the buffer.
Well, so this is the thing, I assume, yeah, your question is more.
Cause it could be.
The seismic shift. I think if, if it's a nuclear bomb, in some ways, everybody's going down in a big way, you know, so there's some, there's some hurting around that. I think it's really hard to project in the moment, but let's just say if for a variety of reasons, all of our federal funding was stripped away, we would really, we, we'd be hard to open the doors. You know, that would be the reality because it's so intertwined with so many different things we do. Also, we don't have, um, we do not have, this is something we'll have to talk about. We don't have provisions within our CBA around, we'll fund you if, if we got surprised, the federal money wasn't available, oops, we're, you don't have a job. Um, now we could, as we approach the deadlines for notifications of people, a most conservative approach would be we're not offering you, we were, we're giving you a letter that says we don't know that you have a job to a ton of our workforce. Um, we don't know that that, based on we're around right now would be the right move in terms um, in terms of things. And it goes back to the whole state's going to be in trouble if suddenly, you know, federal funding was ripped down. And that's just us, all of the country would be in this. That doesn't mean it's not going to happen, um, but it, uh, but it would really lock up the system in a way, I think, where we would be then in the mush with everybody else being like, how does this, how does this exist?
Medicaid's had some pretty major changes over the last few years. But it hasn't been to the point where it's really affected our public services.
And Lisa, that, that's really why, when I talked about the IDEA grant, the federal grant, about just how incredibly important that law is because of what it does, those points that I have.
And can I just point out the IDEA is not a Department of Education law. That was, that was created prior to Department of Education. So there's going to be some, some stinkiness if on the federal government level, I believe if they do get rid of the Department of Education, IDEA is still there.
Right. It's not an extension of the law, the, yeah, the, the work, the legal work that created the department comes after IDEA and, and court saying.
So that I see a lot of, I see a lot of cases going to the Supreme Court over this to begin with.
Yep.
But also where, where you're dealing with individuals with disabilities. They're in their rights, that's, that is prior to the Department of Education.
And I think case law on our responsibility as a public entity to, um, to youth with disabilities and ensuring that we are taking the steps to make sure that they get an education, a FAP, free and appropriate public education. Um, that's not going away. I don't, there's no way for an executive order to sign that away. So our obligation to fill those, fill those things, uh, will continue as far as I can see, and any in the near future. Um, at the same time, our ability to pay for some of those things could be, could be impacted through executive orders and other things. Something for us to, to keep an eye on. It's very fluid. And I think you, you know, I think most of you all appreciate it. Very fluid situation right now. It's also hard. As things are happening, it's hard to interpret exactly what they. I think you care about.
We also billing Medicaid schools for transportation for special ed cases.
So that's the Medicaid to schools act now works unfortunately. The third major area of revenue generation is special ed aid. And that essentially is to help offset some, um, just some weighty financial impacts that we have as a district. So the average cost per New Hampshire student is about twenty-one five. Now, when we have a student whose costs exceeds three and a half times that number, then the state will cover eighty percent of the costs after that. If we have costs that are ten times the per New Hampshire student amount, then the state covers a hundred percent. That would be the two fifteen figure.
It's fine. So, no, you go.
Um, does this include out of district?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so if I'm understanding this, we shouldn't spend more than two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on any student.
So we.
That's ten times.
So we have, um, so we need to, under the law, we need to spend what we need to spend in order to address the disability and make sure the student has a free and appropriate public education. In terms of the, in terms of the funding, so if we have, um, so we're not, we're not capped and we can't spend more than two hundred and fifteen thousand, uh, dollars. You'll see, when you see in here, it's, it's not a net cost. So it's like, we're showing you the full expenditure. So we have like students that are, and guys, correct me if any of this is wrong. So if we have students who we, we tuition and transportation are like. So if we have students who we, between tuition and transportation are like four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We, you know, marginally, after we spend the first seventy five grand. Between that and up to two hundred and fifteen, the state covers eighty percent.
Yeah.
Everything over two fifteen on that next tier, it's almost like tax, you know, taxation tier. They're then gonna cover the rest. So that's that idea of like, and I, I know Rick, and I understand why people wanted to change it from catastrophic aids to some other terminology. Cause they don't want.
Yeah, it's more.
You know, that, however, it's really catastrophic cost. It's like so beyond what you normally would spend on a student, that the state's gonna cover that difference once you get up into that.
There is, there is, there is like a known cost or a known cap that tends to burst.
In terms of what it's gonna, on, on a given year, based on the average cost for, for a student state. On a given year, these, that works out to the thing.
Okay.
So then, but then all of this in terms of reimbursement, guys, we don't see, it's, we're. A cycle out before we, so really in terms of our net spending on, we don't, we don't, on the student who's a four hundred thousand dollar student. We, we send out that money to pay for the services, but we ultimately, that's not the net cost to us of that particular student. Uh, but on paper, we've got the expenditure, which is the combination of those things. Again, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, but you will, you will see what spending is. State runs in a Miami budget. They put so much in the budget for special education aid. Never enough. They run out all the time. And when they run out, they basically say, sorry, you don't get it. Uh, they made a big deal this year about another. Forty million, which honestly is a drop in the bucket. So even though we qualify, that we received eight hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. I'm gonna go back over a billion easier. Uh, but because of the shortfall in money, and the other challenge that the state never planned for. And figured there wasn't a cost of law, it was, they changed the age, so we'll, we can have a student for it. Twenty one, twenty two. That, and when they did that, they didn't increase the funding for it. So any student you have that's twenty one or twenty two years old, probably the most severe.
Yeah.
Disabled and require the most amount of services. Those are extremely expensive, they did figure on that for funding. So we're not necessarily getting that hundred percent they're talking about.
Yeah.
Basically, you get what you get and be happy you have it.
So what, do we know what it, wait, wait, sorry, we have Carrie, Brian, and Tish.
I'm all set. Byron actually asked my questions.
So are you saying on, like on this thing with two point seven million? Is that the, all the cost?
That was what was eligible.
But when you, you just said like one point five, we could have got, I guess, is that not including? Like I, I wanna understand, we, did we think we were getting two point seven?
No, we know we're never getting it. Remember, we're paying everything at seventy five thousand dollars.
Got it.
And then after seventy five thousand dollars, they're gonna pay eighty percent. If we get to two hundred and fifteen thousand, pay a hundred.
So it wasn't, so it wasn't like a one point five deficit, one point five, it was more like. More like seven hundred thousand.
Well, no, I mean, if I had to guesstimate that number, that would probably, probably go back.
Oh, so it's pretty close.
Yeah.
If they were so many, if they had all the money.
Wouldn't get all two point six. A two point six would be submit.
Right.
These are eligible for special ed revenue. Take as much as you can give us and. Uh, I think we don't, never. This is one of those things, I, I think I said before, maybe where you have to spend money to make, to get money. This is one of those things, that's why it's called catastrophic games. Your highest being, your highest expense students are the ones you're getting reimbursed for. If you don't have expensive students, they're only paying fifty thousand, you get a company. There are some districts out there that are getting zero for a catch drop.
Brian.
That was pretty much my question. Um, I will say, it'd be nice to have a line that. Explain that a little better, cause when I first saw that too.
Yeah.
Recoverable costs or something.
But we, what we didn't actually recover was like a hundred and some thousand. Wasn't actually paid. And I appreciate you both in that, this, Liz's question about Medicaid, you guys trying to gauge. To what extent, if we squeeze the orange a little bit more, that we could get a few more drops out of it, you know, what he said is state side. No, not in a bad, I, I don't mean in a bad way, but there's a little bit of like, just trying to gauge, alright, we, you submitted this. How much should we have gotten? Did we get what we should have got? Uh, did the state not do what they were supposed to do? Did we, did we fully take advantage of everything we take advantage of? I think they're all good questions, so, but I hear that.
This is what makes the. Nation of revenue, it's extremely difficult, you know, things like this, cause you, you're really shooting at your target. But you don't wanna go over, because if you, if you estimate too much revenue when you're short, it comes out of the other end, now it's basically expensive.
By now, we're going to City Council and asking for a supplemental because.
Liz, just to ask, I have two clarifying questions. So, um, you have a kid that costs nine hundred thousand. Excuse me, ninety thousand dollars, okay? So in the, when you're saying you're submitting two point six million, are you submitting the ninety thousand? Or are you submitting anything over the seventy five? Like, are you submitting fifteen thousand?
Submitting ninety thousand.
Okay.
Knowing that we're only gonna get a portion of that back. We have to spend the money for it to qualify.
Okay. And then I know Byron had asked about what's not included, so I guess I was curious. How are you factoring the cost per pupil if we are youth special ed teachers within the building? Like, if there's one special ed teacher that oversees five kids, do you look at their salary and divide it by five? Or is there any sort of calculation, like what is missing, i- if anything, from these numbers?
Well, generally, those teachers aren't being reimbursed. These are high cost students. Those high cost students generally are at issue.
About are we, are we doing the OTPT services, those are all going through Medicaid? Like, we're not, we're not putting those through here. So this is, so for the most part, this point six is added district cost?
For the most part.
Okay. And then is there anything that's, when we have a student that's on a district, is there anything that is not included? Like, can you give an example of something that's not included? Like, we know the services, the tuition, the equipment, transportation.
That's included.
That's included. Is there anything, like basically, probably just their IEP meeting within this school? That we're paying for the teachers to be there or whatnot? Is there anything that's not included in that amount?
I don't know. I'm relying.
I think it's pretty inclusive.
I think it's.
Okay.
Some residential placement plan, paying for.
Yeah.
Student to live.
Yeah, so the only thing that's not factored is when the family has to have an IEP meeting with our staff at Portsmouth. With our principal or teachers or special ed, you know, that's not included in the cost. But this, okay, all right, I just wanna be clear. Thank you.
Teacher and schooling, an IEP meeting, it's a cost you already have.
Well, arguably, no, I mean, if a student didn't have an IEP or five oh four, we wouldn't need that person, right? So I think these are added costs and. Yeah, I guess I'm just curious, when we're, when we're considering special ed as a whole, you know, talking numbers. You know, just trying to get a bigger picture of what these costs are and, and, you know, I don't know. But I mean, I think we're gonna have to get creative too. I mean, if there is any position, like ability to get creative on. Of this funding and, and billing and whatnot. So I guess I'm curious, like, when you have a para or you have a special ed. Adv, you know, provider or, um, case manager or whatever, like, are there other buckets that could sort of cover those costs?
Well, I wanna be cautious, you say creative, you have creativity, be creative with funding.
No, I get that, it's tajatory, but I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand here the bigger.
I'm saying, are there, are there opportunities for us to take what we're doing and, and change them in some ways? It would create additional efficiencies, cost savings, while still getting the same services.
Yeah, yeah.
Byron, and then Carrie.
Okay, um, submitted twenty three, twenty four. Does that mean it was part of the twenty three, twenty four? Budget?
No, it's part of that school year when it was, those when they was, that was submitted last year. Cause the, we're always a year behind.
Always a year behind.
So that, what we're receiving. This year.
Okay, so I'm trying to line up like, I know it's not exactly the numbers out of district placement. But we said it was, well, there's some. I was looking back at, um, the past year, so the total added district placement in twenty three, twenty four was three point three. One from twenty two, twenty three was two point eight. I'm trying to figure out if that two point six relative to two point eight. Three point three.
I would be hopeful to have tha- that in comparison for me too, over the last like five years, that goes for to.
In terms of, I mean, just in general, kind of like the, the. The expense, ongoing expense within addage replacements, and then, and then also what does the revenue, returning revenue look like?
What, one of the other details that I've learned in this process is that the billable daily charge is very different. So if a kid's only ten, we're only paying, but we budget for the whole placement. So anyway, it would be, I would be looking at. What was budgeted in fiscal year twenty four.
Yep.
What was billed or charged or spent in fiscal year twenty four, what was submitted for fiscal year twenty four and what was reimbursed.
And, and then, do that reconciling at the end of the, the summer is kind of figuring out, what did we not? When was kid absent, you know, how much should we get back as a result of all this stuff? So then that other pieces, all in, in that soup is also then, okay, what did we? You know, uh, fifteen to eighteen months earlier, would, would, would we project the revenue was gonna be? Uh, and, um, and so all those kind of things kind of, kind of come together, but we can see what we can do to try that.
Right, but keep in mind, do that the way that our addage districts are hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So we would get nothing back. We could spend the money, we don't get, we don't get anything back.
But I think this is really important for us to be able to advocate for the budget we're asking.
I agree, I agree. This is the big part of this.
It's not about, I mean, maybe it's to go to the state and be like, no, 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 but I don't think that's gonna work. Maybe liquor stores.
So, no, but I agree with, I agree with you that we need to be able to explain this, uh, to the city council in a way that's understandable. Uh, and, and.
We need, we need numbers.
And, right. And the ability to pair over years.
I'm sorry, Byron, that is up to you, to you.
No, I just wanna, on that, just, and this is sort of like the general statement, and just, cause it's helped for me, me understand. Um, and so maybe helpful for others, is that, um. Like the added district cost as a percentage of the total budget, five years ago. Was three point eight percent of total budget, and this year it's six percent. So in the last five years, the to, the, of our total budget, that district is taking up is almost double. Um, and so I, it, it's just, well, one, it's really concerning because like, if you pull that out over how many years. How much of the total budget is being consumed by out of districts? And that's a really scary question. Um, and, and there's that part, but then on the, on the advocacy side, there's the narrative around, um. The, uh, uh, essentially what's happening is the taxpayers are, are sort of, um. Covering the gap of what's missing at the state to cover, like the entirety of the special education budget. And I just wanna make sure that's, that's still reasonable, that's really important.
You know, what would keep in mind too, that, what I've always said in every, every board of working is. We all know the pandemic's over.
Yeah.
But the recovery of the pandemic is gonna be longer than the pandemic itself. A lot of these kids. Are, came back from COVID with.
Yeah.
Serious behavioral issues or other issues that required them to go out of district and recome out of the lines of service. That is the long term. Call it long COVID, you can call it whatever you want, but the effect of, of COVID is gonna be much longer.
And I would say that, I think we're at a time, we're at an interesting time culturally, where people wanna turn the page on. And I think it's a time where we can over rely on, you know, COVID happened, COVID happened, COVID happened, and people are like, how long am I gonna keep saying this? Um, but in these cases, which are really acute suit cases, with some, with some really challenging stuff, more going out of district. Um, that is gonna, the tail on, on COVID is gonna be a long tail. Uh, but I will also say that just in, you know, my experience in other districts too, is. There is this ongoing kind of conversation about exactly what you say, environment, which is if you take the pie over time, you keep looking at the pie. And you look at what's happening to the, how does this replacement that's portioning the overall buy. Uh, it keeps growing, and that's where a lot of places, and the conversation is, if our overall spending on education is gonna stay the same. You start to cannibalize the rest of the budget in order to pay for, um, some, from some very high cost. Uh, situations that you wanna pay for.
Yeah.
Um, but it ends up putting you in a position where, are we gonna lay off? Over years, are we gonna lay off five or six staff in order to pay for three or four places?
Yes, if the narrative, if the narrative is that FTEs are your FTEs over time, it's like that, you know, we need to. Tell the story over time, worth the cost.
Lisa, Brian, Liz, Carrie.
So I think the other piece of the story that I wanna make sure we don't lose, we do an excellent job of keeping students in the district. And like, way above and beyond with a lot of other districts in this state. In terms of making sure that kids can stay in general education settings and have services. And so, you know, I think I ask every year, you know, can we spend more on behavioral supports? And can we spend more, and I know we can't maybe this year. But that does have an impact over time at the edges and helping to make it easier for more kids to stay in our district. I mean, some kids have such serious medical and behavioral and emotional issues that they really need that extra support that we can't do. And we're federally required to provide that to them, but. A lot of the social, emotional stuff, like, that's what it's doing. Like, it's making it easier for kids to be. Integrated, and I just don't wanna lose that.
No, I think it's a super important point, and I think Rick and I have talked about this a lot coming from other places. It's a hallmark of this place.
Yeah, it really is.
That, that, when we talk about, he, Rick had L R V up there, least restricted environment. This is a place that fundamentally, you know, you know, like puts. It, it believes in this idea of put kids in with their peers, like to the, like we're, that is like a deadlock.
We really do.
Kind of belief, you know, and there's been a bunch of structures built up over time to support students at their local school, in their local classrooms. Uh, and, um, so it, it absolutely cannot be lost because it is this, is a special thing about.
That leads to a list of conversation too, because if we didn't have Lister, we would be sending those kids out. Cost to, you know, adding to that number. So we, it's an indirect savings having Lister, because now we can deal with those kids in Germany. Saving ourselves hundreds, if not a million dollars.
And that's what I ask every year, and we're never quite there, is are we at a tipping point with any services where we think we might look at? Bringing them in? I mean, it always depends on a specific mix of needs. Are you seeing anything right now where there might be a trend that way?
You know, actually Patty and I have a meeting later on this week with the elementary level about special ed programming. And seeing what we can do with our existing resources to be more inclusive at practice. So I, you know, I think we're always trying to move in that direction, is, is, is being inclusive and being accepting and.
And you guys could correct me if you, again, it's all, I'm not all knowing everything that we're doing. But we're, the, um. The conversation, our conversations about, we talked about that in the past, about identifying clusters of students. And then we can use, then we can, then we can build programs where we cluster kids with similar, similar issues. I would say right now, and Rick, you can correct me again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say there's been more. More conversation at the, over the last year or so, around some, some in-house, currently announced students. Who are maybe a cluster, we might be looking at some, some programming that's, that's a little bit more sub-separate, but would be here. Um, in an effort to have those kids be, stay in our schools and not go out.
Yeah, well.
Um, I don't know that we, we've been in a situation where we're seeing a whole bunch of people that are out right now. That we think we can pull back in. Uh, and so, so when those conversations are happening, they're definitely happening. It's been about identification of in-house students right now.
And that's our Thursday afternoon.
Brian, Carrie, or Liz.
Um, I was trying to think of my question. Oh, yeah, the, um. I think Byron brought up a pretty, um, good point about. Uh good point about. You know, the increase in the percentage. But I'd like to be able, and I don't know if it's uh how you could tease it out, but. You know, you also mentioned COVID. So is it? Uh is it the demand of services going higher or is it the cost of services?
Probably yes. Costs is up. So it's, so you you have an increase in in districts. Um. My experience is just in the two states I've been in, but an increase in the number of people that are seeking placements for students. Uh and a decrease in places like Frank, those types of places. So, you know. Your supply and your exam are going in the wrong direction. Uh and uh and so that, so the, so I think you might mention this one of your sites, Rick, there is. There are, uh the state does look at costs. Of in-state. Facilities and and there's been approved or or not those those things, but there's absolute pressure from the marketplace about. You know, what those things cost.
Carrie. We. When we have. So if if I was a parent and had. A child who I didn't feel like was getting services. And I went to X Y and Z Academy. Is there like a, I don't wanna say like for profit, but is there a component of like, we'll do the evaluations? Here. And he would be a great candidate for our program and our, like when we have, when we're considering these placements for our students. Are we driving that evaluation? Or are we mostly responding to external evaluations?
We 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 drive.
Okay.
And we really know the needs of that student. So we're really the primary mover something. It's not people from the outside coming in. Soliciting students, if you will. We're really the drivers of that, when we need to find that level of education.
Yeah, parents sometimes disagree with us.
Oh, yeah.
About what about what uh. Are the experts we have included um through testing and through data based on what they see in the students. Um and then in some situations you may have folks um seek out their own independent evaluation. Um you know, and or um object to to what the team is saying of student needs.
And there's there's healthy processes to resolve those differences.
I have some specific questions about the one sixty five budget in particular, but I don't know. Back to the earth. I'll shoot. Go ahead. So um I appreciated the rate sheet that really helps to understand kind of how these.
Yeah, the light setting sheet.
Yeah. Um but then, of course, that gives me a thing to look at, then compare. Um so a couple of the um placements are like over, there's three places that are over three hundred thousand dollars a year. Um and I'm inferring that those are residential placements because they don't have transportation and budget as well.
Transportation costs come through. So few of us do, so that's part of this.
Yeah, and so and so. One, if I was hoping you could speak to kind of what uh uh three hundred plus placement. Is like, like what kind of needs is that addressing? Um and then like. There's also three transportation lines that are ninety thousand or above, which to me is a full-time salary. So I'm I'm. Really hard pressed to understand how we're paying. Is there another way of doing transportation? Or are we so um? Like, I'll take that job if I can have that job instead of my current job. I don't know, like. It.
I have known districts to purchase their own fleet of buses for this sort of thing. Uh it's not something that I'm really familiar with. I'm. More used to having vendors. Having a process going that way with transportation providers, but I do know about the districts and I think it's. Relatively infrequent where they have their own fleet of buses to do something like this, because they only have to maintain them. Have to hire, you know, who drives.
Save insurance.
Gonna pay the insurance, you know. We're not really in the transportation business personally, we're in the education, but I hear what you're saying.
So, yeah, like I guess how does one? A a hundred and eighty day placement. Costs ninety dollars in transportation.
I have to, I have to look at it a little bit more closely. I didn't. I guess I didn't prepare that.
Yeah, yeah.
The the biggest, the biggest point of that rate sheet is it's pointing out that that the folks in Concord. Set all of those rates for the out of district tuition. So it's not like. For-profit people are doing it or private companies are doing it. They're all done by our state government. So not only do they set the tuition rates, they also set the rate for speech, they set the rate for OT, they set the rate for. You know, psych services and transportation, so.
But that, but the limit of this of our state. Is. At our borders, is that correct, right?
Yes.
So if we have, if we can find a appropriate placement in Hampshire. We could be looking in Massachusetts.
And we do, sometimes we have.
And Concord's kind of mandated that that rate sheet does not apply.
To be. However, if we feel that's a good point, Zach, if we feel that it was a place in Massachusetts or Maine, we're not far from. Either other states, um. We do look at those schools if they'll best help the the student. Um and um. Yes, but this is just within our borders.
And my, I'm sorry, I skipped on my first question, but like what is a three hundred thousand plus a year?
You know, that would involve.
You give an example of a program? I mean, I guess probably not for that particular kid, but like I'm thinking of like the girls' school in Vermont, like it would be residential as well.
Yeah, it'd be residential with very, very small classes. Pretty much one-to-one support throughout the day. There may be uh a medical component. Or expensive equipment like wheelchairs, for instance, or. You know, all sorts of equipment that.
And. And like some other, some beyond the core service. Variety of tack-on services like OT, PT. Speech, all those things could be could be. Add-ons to wherever the core kind of tuition of of the places.
Yep.
Nurses, like if there was that.
Their medical.
Sometimes. Sometimes these students have nurses around the block, not just for the instruction they. In place of residential, we are responsible for around flocking. Care too.
Quickly, I'll tell you, there was a young man in my neighborhood who went to Don Dero with my kids. Blind um. Intellectually disabled and it was determined that the Portsmouth could not meet his needs. He went to Perkins School for the blind in Lafayette, Massachusetts. From the time he was in third grade till he turned twenty one. In those days it was twenty one, now it's twenty two. And we had to pay that bill. It was three hundred thousand dollars.
See, I don't know if that's appropriate to be sharing. I mean, we some of us personally know this person and their family and I. Well, I just don't think, yeah, I get that, but I think and I won't do that. Yeah, but I mean.
And added to transportation because he came home every weekend. Oh, um you know, it's it can get costly very quickly.
All right, next one, good.
Now, it's sorry, do I get my turn? So I'm just looking at the one sixty five budget as well, and I'm looking at nursing services, elementary, special ed, O O D contract services. Um I guess, you know, and I'm looking at the other um. The the PMS one where the sign language providers added in. I guess my first question is. On the new budget, we have some things in yellow, right? What are the, what is the yellow supposed to signify?
Those are transfers from. Those are the numbers, those are the numbers that go over to two oh seven, like two oh six.
Okay, um because I think in the future, I mean, I'm flagging it obviously, but I think sometimes it might be benefit, like part of me is like, oh, are these bigger numbers or new numbers like? So or added numbers, I think sometimes having like the added. Numbers like flagging like the extra sign language provider. Added to the budget may be a benefit, but I was hoping that maybe you could speak to. Um or any sort of added request that's being put into the budget. Um highlighting in some form would be beneficial, but I guess I was hoping you could speak to those, the contract services. Um like I'm looking at the um the sign language provider, for example. Is that somebody that's like a pair with the child all day? I mean, that's for out of district. And then um. We're also looking at the charter school services. So is the anything with charter school related on always under out of district? Even though. Like, like what is the charter school service? Is that the assessment of those students? Or is that a service we're being provided? Like. We're paying the charter school. Versus having it under PT or OT?
Yeah, we would pay the charter school for the services that are in the eye. Rather than sending a person from Portsmouth to the charter school.
Okay. No, I understand that, but I guess I was curious with the cost centers, like why we're going there versus like having it under an OT or PT. Cost center and then like something like a sign language provider.
They're all district. These are all services that are flagged out of districts.
But we're paying a full salary for one sign language provider for one student?
Maybe one student, it could be five students.
So is it five students?
We're we're not, we can't share that. That's a, that would be a verbal violation.
So, but I understand you can identify the student, but you could say we have one student that needs. Um the, you know, you're literally identifying student by student for cost, so. I don't think it's a FERPA violation to say one student versus five students.
You know, for me, the magic number is really anything less than six is not something that I'd like to share. Right, so five, five and below, I'm not comfortable sharing.
I I can tell you sixty thousand is not a full-time interpreter though, because they have to be certified. They have to have quite a bit of credentialing and. That's like a hundred K K a year.
Yeah, I think if there are some sixty K in this public, but um but yeah, I guess I'm just curious if any of these services, like the nursing services or anything. Um. They're all going under this out of district cost center. Um if they. Are in fact, like the related services by O O D providers, what does that mean?
That would be the speech, OT, nursing services for students that are out of district.
So that would that be like us sharing our services with them or we're paying those services separately?
Paying that school who employs. The person providing those services. So we just pay for that, for the.
Why don't we identify that under the O O D placement? Versus having having like, like part of me wonders if, like, wouldn't we get more reimbursement if it was included into the? O O D placement cost?
Nothing to do with with. Has to be by accounting standards. That's be what it's being spent on, which is contracted services.
I know, but when you go to build a state, are you including that cost into the?
That's nothing to do with where it is on this, when we build a state. Nothing to do with where it falls the accounting.
But but in terms of, I I think, I think it sounds like the core question is. When, when it comes to um, we were just talking a little bit while ago about what's wrapped into a student. In in terms of a placement and which of those costs are part of the package and which are. Add-ons that would appear here. And so when we do it in terms of our budgeting here, how are we thinking about? How we're indicating that in terms of our, just our budget book? Are we? So in this case, with like um. The fir, on the top of that page, three twenty, and I don't know, Rick, you you don't have a party idea, you don't, so, so we've got. Elementary sped O O D contracted services. So this would be a breakout of students that are in out of district placements. It's not their tuition cost, because that would appear down below in.
Vision and transportation.
Transportation, so it's not tuition, it's not transportation.
Traditional service.
But in additional services as that the team decided were necessary. As part of the IEP, but it's not the core tuition bill that we receive from the institution. So then we have other, I think I refer to it as tack-ons. Uh that are not part of their kind of core package for the tuition. And those would be for elementary students, those get kind of mushed up into these couple of lines that are under contracted services.
Yeah, so I'm I'm curious though, like, are we taking advantage when I, when like when I was talking about before? You know, getting creative, but I I'm I'm also trying trying to say to you, like, I don't wanna submit anything, so. And we're, and I also wanna fully understand this too. So for the special ed aid revenue, formerly the catastrophic aid. Are we considering these tack-on for lack of better terms?
Gets submitted as part of that two point.
Is when we are doing.
Yeah.
Okay, because I, because I. I mean, I almost feel like for a budgetary standpoint, it would be helpful to understand. You know, like if you are doing sign language providers sixty K and that's for five students divided or six students to make it easier. Divided by six and tack on the ten thousand to the. Private tuition cost. I mean, I get from a county starting point, you need to do that, but I think from a. From a. A budgetary standpoint for child costs for special education, look. Outlook would be helpful.
That wouldn't be the tuition cost either. That's in addition to the tuition.
Yeah, but I'm I'm trying to get the full picture of what it costs per, if we're getting a per pupil cost. You know, like we can look at transportation placement number three and we can look at sped to uh tuition. Uh tuition for placement number three, and we can get a total cost for that student, but if that student is receiving. You know, nursing services too, we're not getting the full cost. So I guess, you know, from a. I don't know, it from a picture, full picture standpoint.
Yeah, you.
And then to be divided by the number of students.
Carrie, um I understand there's not a lot of control, but I also feel a need to. Do some due diligence and ask you for things that are possible to deliver on, therefore. I um. I understand the tuition rates, like. Can't really do a lot about this. I. Would love a little more look into the transportation costs because. The last year having a max of about seventy thousand to having now. Many that have increased is only, it ends up being like a hundred and thirty thousand increase. So I know that's tiny.
Our percent.
Oh. What did you say, Brian? Thank you for your analysis.
Respent the lesser spent.
I withdraw my request.
Transportation is so limited right now and. There's a lot of people in the education world that said if I had to do this all over again, I would start especially on transportation.
I I. You just added yourself. It's definitely within our circles. They can basically, a bunch of people have said, I wish I had.
Or can. Is it, is there a lot of regulatory?
There's some.
There's some, it's less than you think.
But not what?
Not as much.
Is the, is the, oh, out of district. Transportation in a different place than one seventy?
Sixty nine.
It's on the front page.
Towards the bottom.
Nancy, go ahead now. Okay, thank you, Liz. Thanks.
So you're. During one sixty five, you know, towards the bottom of the page.
Five, five teens are all.
You've got, yeah, five eighteens.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, can we move on, Rick?
Sure, sounds good.
Your presentation.
Yeah.
Good questions, everybody.
Yep.
Good comments, good question.
So essentially.
I think, I think we're about to get this. And then people asked a whole bunch of questions.
Yeah.
They did the homework, they read what we were gonna do and they started banging into this, so.
So we essentially covered the revenue side of the house. So the revenue side of the house, we talked about those three major drivers. Now we're gonna go to the expense side of the house. So the expense side of the house is where we're s- where the money's going. So no longer the money is not coming in, the money's going out. The three biggest drivers around special expenses would be like we talked about. Out of district tuition. That's a big driver and it's also a big revenue source, but it's also a big driver on the expense side. Transportation cost, I have a slide coming up on that in a minute. That is also a major driving factor. And then the the.
It must have been when we did it and we could burn it to a PDF because it was one, two, three in the.
Oh, was it?
We'll do a slide deck. That's not you.
That's not you.
When we flipped it over to files.
And then the last major driver, of course, is is our special education in our schools. Out of district tuition here is how it breaks down. So elementary is, you know, over six hundred thousand. The middle school is about three twenty eight and the high school is at one point four million for a total of. Two million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand and fifty-three dollars.
Rick, you share, and I know we had a conversation the other day, but can you share why? Yeah, district is higher in high school than it is in elementary and middle school.
Yeah, yeah. Kid, you know, students developmentally are easier to manage when they're little, right? They're. They're a little, a little more easy easily convinced to do things. Behavior management plans work. Um they're still growing, they're still developing a child, you know. One year and then six months later, it's not the same child because. You know, preschool, elementary, middle school kids, they develop, they grow. But you know, once you. Hit puberty and get further into high school, people are more set in their ways. It's harder to to make those meaningful changes. And I think that's one reason why we see. It's harder to to make those meaningful changes. And I think that's one reason why we see. The budget the way it is, is that high school kids developmentally are harder to reach.
Need more.
Need more.
It it sounds like a lot that's driving this out of district is behavioral issues.
To some extent, yeah.
Some extent.
This includes court-placed students and students that are placed by the state. So about a third of that, I don't know if it's actually, probably a little bit less than a third, involves students. Placed by either the court through adjudication or the state through. You know, DCYF or neglect and stuff like that.
So with that said, would it be beneficial at looking to bring in behavior specialists, CBAs? On our payroll? To bring some of these students back? Like having a good team, a good uh BCBA with behavioral team. Um, I mean, is that an area that there's like a cluster?
So we have two, we have two in-house BCBA's right now, and their caseloads are. They're over what's the size of their caseloads.
So much so that we contract out?
We've, we're, yeah, that's right. We have two BCBA's and we contract out for just the kids in the district right now. Um, I think it is, can be challenging at times. Again, Rick, you have more experience with this than me. But it's we, it's hard for us to compete in the marketplace for BCBA's sometimes, and there's high demand. Um, you know, so that's an issue. The other thing that can be challenging around um some behavioral programs. This is true about some of the kids who go out where we, part of. Part of us pushing out is that we don't have the people in-house to perform the service. Some of it is sometimes we don't have the expertise to oversee the people who provide the service. Um, so depending on what tier kind of intervention is going on, it might get to a point where it's beyond my professional expertise, beyond Rick's. Professional expertise to try to supervise the specialists that would be involved in providing uh service. So sometimes that's part of it too. Is that we have, we need people who are, who have that ability to just even oversee those types of services at the same time. So, um, so we can. But back to your question about behavior, kind of social emotional um stuff, I think we, Lister is an example. Um, also just kind of in our, in our buildings, we're doing a lot to what Lisa was saying before. About trying to be inclusive and surround kids with a lot of support, so that those kids aren't um, aren't going out. So level of. Of the students who are out with behavioral needs. It takes a lot for us to send students out. It gets, I mean, he, a lot of it, not always, but a threshold is definitely when a student is potentially. Um, on a repeated basis, uh, we're worried about them being uh maybe harming, harming themselves or harming staff member. Uh, if that happening is a kind of a regular course of action, that would be a threshold where we'd be like, we might have to have this student.
So having a, having a smaller place, placement. Where the staff there can better manage, because there isn't as many students, it's a smaller place.
Sometimes, sometimes it was less, um, sometimes it's less academic requirements, because they're really working in social and emotional peace. And the academics sort of trigger uh for the student. I mean, I'm.
First things first, and sometimes it's social and emotional needs. It's for, it's for students that have severe mental health or behavioral health challenges. And often the students are, are physically aggressive. And that's.
That's the big change, I would say, over the last fifteen to twenty years is we're seeing more of that and less. Of the, like, the kid who's going to Perkins School for the blind. And that would have been like your, your kind of classic caseload of students that were gonna um go outbound. I mean, those. Are students with uh really intense um medical disabilities where they had to have like around the clock care. That was really around health as much as anything else. Um, the, now we've got this, it's a real shift towards. Student with behavioral slash social emotional um needs that are be, that put them in a position where they struggle. To to function within a regular school um in a way that. That again is safe for them and safe for others, but also just, it may not rise to the level of safety because like, they're just not accessing the curriculum at all. Because they're so dysregulated on a, on a regular basis at school that they can't, that I'm. You know, we look at what what's happening, like this, the student's not getting an education right now. Uh, and so we have to go someplace else where we're gonna be able to. Put that student in a position where they can't. Super hard. Some of those decisions are really tough decisions to make. Um, and sometimes families are very much want that to be what we're gonna do is look at it on a just replacement. Sometimes. Families really don't want that to happen. Absolutely. They want them to be here. And that's, uh, those are all tough ones to navigate for sure.
So Tishy, you saying it would be great if we could be the more Lister Academy type scenarios where we didn't have to put the kids out of district?
I I do. Now, I worked at a nonprofit school. That we worked with kids with autism with behavioral issues.
Yep.
I understand, um, as I came home bruised many a times and friends. Concussions and broken legs and things like that. I understand the, um. The extent of the, um, the aggression. Um, it would be fantastic. Um, but I also know what it takes. It takes a one-on-one. Not only do you have to have. You know, BCBA's there to oversee the behavioral issue. If you, if you have thirty kids in there. You have at least thirty, um, teachers in there working with. Working with each individual student, then you have a nurse or two. Then you also have to have. Um, your, your special ed teachers that are writing the curriculum. Um. Then you have to have, these kids were having just basic, how to make food, how to um do laundry. So you have different staff for that. It would take a lot, but in the, in the big run, would it be? Over a million dollars? Most likely, yes, when you start adding. Um, all the components to it. But I was just wondering if there were some students that if there, if we took them, say there was three students. At like, we'll say a million dollars it it costs. Would it be beneficial? To bring them back and and add an additional BCBA? But as you said too, the, the pool is small and, um. They're in demand, so we might not be able to meet their um wage requirements.
Yeah, I think, let me jump in, Rick, when I get, but the, uh, I think that, uh. The things we're looking for are those, again, clusters of students. Clusters are gonna, that are gonna maintain over time. So that as we're building a program, you know, it's, this is something that's gonna be in place for five, ten years. Otherwise, you know, you start something and. Um, so I think that's the thing. I do think, my understanding of the history of Lister is that at one time. Kind of some of the, kind of the profile of some of the students we're talking about was a little bit more in that, that direction. Uh, not, uh, it was not, as far as I know, my understanding is not necessarily students on the autism spectrum, but. Um, are students with more behavioral challenges. And I would say that that is not, that we talked about this before, I think that. It's not necessarily the profile of the Lister student today.
Oh, agreed, yeah.
You know, so it's, so if we were gonna. For people who've been in town for a while, they would think, oh, let's just, we'll, we'll pull in a bunch, any students who have behavioral challenges, and we'll throw them in Lister. Um, that's not a profile of Lister right now. Uh, and so we would have to be thoughtful about how we would, how we would do that.
And Lister's for high school students. It's not, you're not dealing with K through. So that would be a, that's a totally different game.
Lisa. Do you want to circle back on that though? Because at the first night of the budget hearings, we talked a little bit about some of the requests that we're not doing.
Yes.
And there was some question about getting more behavioral support, I think, at the middle. You know, we used to have a program there, the kids program. It was very much targeting kids and really successfully so. You know, and I don't know if we lost a cluster of kids and that's where it went or what happened, but we know the science is the earlier and the younger. You get to kids with more wraparound, the better outcomes they have. It's not always less money for you, but if you spend more money, then you can sometimes stem the tide of the cascading dysregulation. By the time they hit thirteen, they don't necessarily want to engage in the support you're giving them.
And that's, you know, I think, and that, our Thursday meeting is a good example of us working with. Staff and enhancing, strengthening the program.
I just worry when we're ever here saying we don't want to add more psychologists, because we have to think about which positions we can afford. We don't want to add more behavioral programming because we're making hard decisions. But at some point, that's gonna end up costing us.
Absolutely. And and, uh, and you'll, I think, if, if it wasn't just the middle school, I think we had.
That was just the example.
Four, but I think it was four different requests.
Yeah.
There were building-based requests.
Yeah.
That were connected back to special education needs and, um, and multiple of those were connected to students with. Some level of dysregulation and rank and regulations. Uh, and it is, you're right, it's just trade-offs. Like, we don't make the investment now. When you could maybe have a big investment, it could be more costly again.
Right, Byron.
There's two nines and there's no eleven. On the, I, the placement decision, to make sure that, um. Or something's not.
In terms of the placement numbers?
Yeah.
You just saved up a million dollars.
Well, that could be, I, I can double check that. I have a.
Okay.
Do you have a separate graph? And some of them are.
Mapping, yeah.
Together.
Okay.
Because they're going to the same place.
Okay.
But we'll double check it.
Yeah, we can double check it.
Brian.
So, uh, with, with Lister, remind me again, how many kids are actually Portsmouth kids versus out of district?
Yes, uh, about twenty, there's twenty-six kids total. And I believe twenty-one of those kids are Portsmouth kids. So we have four to five students from out of district coming into our district, which is really nice. I mean, not, not a lot of districts have that. We actively recruit students from Dover, Rochester, Exeter to commit. Start and.
But that, but that pays for Lister, those four, five kids, isn't it?
We're not all the way. And I think that's important from two oh six. So we've been doing, this is part of the, come the two oh six. The two oh six, two oh seven conversation.
Yeah.
So we do do a balance trans, we do a uh transfer from local in to su- to support.
Got it.
Part of the, part of that. And we want to, and we've been having the conversation, soon as Steve, um, Krizniewski came in. Been having the conversation about wanting to build up the number of out-of-district students, so we can get to the point where ideally, it's pretty much covered through tuition. We're not there yet. I will say, um, community campus has helped the cause in terms of when people walk through, they're like, oh. Okay, I can see this where walking through Sherburne School is like, oh, how quickly can we get out of here before we get ten? Uh, so, um, you know, it's just a different, it's just a different experience and it's, I think, um, and I think. That, you know, Rick and and Steve have done a good job of connecting people in the region to be like, look, we want, this is a great program. We want your kids. And so we're seeing an uptick in the number of people who are taking a look.
Right, and I, so, and he did talk about the demand coming up.
Yep, for sure.
Yeah. Well, and that's, I guess that's my other point, is we talked about these clusters. It doesn't have to be, if you subsidize it without it, added. Disturbance, money, you know, coming in.
Right.
And you can use that as a subsidy towards it. But you're right, it'd have to be something where you feel like it could. Get around it, or it was a school almost, you know, uh, to make it work. But. That is a very good example of something working.
Absolutely. If you, if we took that group, let's say we took those twenty-one students. And not all of them would go to out-of-district placements. I don't want to overstate it.
Right.
Um, so let's say, let's say.
High school too.
Fifteen to thirteen of those students were, were in out-of-district placements, or ten. Um, and then, and then we had a program that was less successful for them, or we pushed them back into high school.
Well, then you need the subsidy of the, well, out of districts as well.
Right.
I remember years ago, we had a waiting list for Portsmouth kids at Lister. Because we had so many out-of-district kids. And that did not go well with the community. So we had to change it. We had to say, okay, let's get rid of the waitlist for Portsmouth, then we'll take out of district. So that was years ago, it was, it was other districts would send their kids to Lister. But then they, it was so expensive for those districts and they created their own programs in their own, but they weren't as good.
Now, I will say that we have, and I want to make, be transparent about the fact that we, as we, we do want Lister ultimately to support itself. Right? So we, we do have some conversations about how we are holding slots for out-of-district, out-of-district students. And, um, and I know, um, Steve would, would, would love to have more in-house students, was possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have had that conversation sometimes where it's like, we need you to, we need more out-of-district kids in order to make this, we make this work. So I, so that fits a little bit into the bad example we found as well, but I want to make sure we're transparent about the fact that those are internal conversations.
Yes. What is the capacity at Lister?
So, I think we don't have a stated capacity. And I think we're having an internal conversation right now about what that capacity could be. Um.
And.
You know, it's more than what it is right now.
And that would also include hiring on staff.
Yeah, could be.
Because they're, they're thin right now, is my understanding.
Right. I mean, we, we don't have tons of extra people there.
Right.
Uh.
And I know a lot of them are kind of doing double duty when they come.
Yeah. Yeah, like we, yeah, like we don't have a nurse there.
Right.
There's, there's things that, that, that they do. And at the same time, we want to make sure, we have a, uh, we have a really nice facility. Uh, and we want to make sure that we're utilizing that up to the level that makes it worthy of the investment that we made in the facility.
Okay, in the interest of time, now, because I know you wanted to talk about some of the budget, um.
It's not a long conversation, but.
All right, uh, Rick, can you continue?
Yeah, I'm close to done anyway. So there is on transportation costs. As you can see, like in-district special ed transportation costs are more. That are out-of-district transportation costs. So we spend quite a bit of money on buses within our cities. Uh, transporting students with disabilities. So the third, the third major driver is the special education in our schools. Those are the teachers, the specialists, the support staff that I work with. I, as the director, closely follow industry standards or industry metrics when they're available. To make sure that Portsmouth caseloads are edge. Um, and I'm often talking with my director colleagues around, what's your s- speech caseload? What's your OT caseload? What's your caseload for your special educator? And what I have there are the caseloads for our special educators at all the levels. So high school, it ranges from nineteen to twenty-one, and then there's one teacher with eleven students. A little bit less, because those students are more involved. Same thing with the middle school, the caseload's around fifteen to twenty-two. And then there's one teacher with a caseload of ten, those students are. Then we have the same thing at the elementary level, nine to fifteen, and preschool is a whole different ball. So it's fifty-fifty and that's another presentation that's coming up down. So.
So these are averages?
These are ranges.
Ranges.
For in Portsmouth.
For teacher, for who?
First level, so. The lowest that hi- at the high school would be eleven. But I put that one in parentheses because it's kind of an outlier, given the, the mix of the kids, yeah. The nineteen to twenty-one is the lowest. So there's, there's no teacher with more than twenty-one or ten.
It is a part teacher.
Yeah, yes. Other costs, of course, we have technology. We have a number of students that talk through devices or iPads. Um, so that's a popular device that we use for instructional purposes. We also have special ed curriculum materials. Um. We have St. Patrick's Academy, which is a religious private school in Portsmouth. They also get about a twenty, twenty-two thousand dollar. Chunk of our IDEA grant. Um, and we are the pass-through for that, so we kind of do the work. And then students with disabilities attending St. Pat's are entitled to that twenty thousand dollar figure. If there's a student from Portsmouth attending a charter school, we are responsible for that student. Charter schools in Exeter, Rochester, wherever, if their district of residence is Portsmouth. Then we're responsible to provide that, um, those services. And in the past, I've had students with nursing services that have. That are attending charter schools. And not here, but in those cases, we have to, you know, we have to provide those services in the IP for the. For that family that's choosing the charter school. And you know, I see that there's a big conversation in New Hampshire about school choice, and that's what this is about. There's, um, the real push-to-have more and more charter schools in New Hampshire. And if you go to other parts of the state. More of the west, there's more charter schools out there than you see out in the eastern part of the state.
On the, just a general question on the, so Saint Pat's and also for charter schools, um how much overhead is there for us, the minister? Some understanding they're saying around like the, the funds to those destinations.
It's a lot, it's a lot of work, frankly, you know, it really is.
Would it be accurate to say then, that were those students not at Saint Patrick or charter schools that the total cost of district would be less relative to the special education?
Yeah, it's labor intensive, because we have to go to step out of each, out of our systems.
It stretches us lots of.
You know, yeah, try to get people out to have those conversations and act all that stuff, it's really labor intensive.
Wouldn't it be better to just have the money directly go to those institutions and not come?
It's against the law.
Well, sure, but. Beyond, beyond, beyond those, it wasn't. Would it be, maybe, but the problem, I think, probably was that move us to some, it's kind of a little bit of a local oversight.
Okay.
And then who knows where that's. And that's, not those people aren't ethical or whatever, but sometimes they're only dealing with any of those, some of the schools. They might be dealing with one student who's a special education student, they just don't live in that world, we live in it.
Um, there's been, like, you know, as long as I've been doing this job, we've seen a lot of changes in New Hampshire. There's been a lot of shelters that have closed, particularly girl shelters out in the western part of the state. Group homes have closed, in- in-home supports have been reduced or eliminated. That the approach in New Hampshire is largely uncentralized when you get to that sort of care. And court placements have been reduced significantly. So my point in that slide is, a lot of that has an indirect impact on the school. Because school is an entitlement, school ends up picking up a lot of the slack and you know, it it affects teachers in our classroom, our support staff, the people in the field, and um but the job's gotten harder.
I think that's an interesting point, it goes to some of this, someone we're talking about, Tish, who we're aware as the social safety net has kind of dissolved. We have picked up, cut, pick up the ball, because it could, you know, a student who perhaps in the past may, may have had some um mental health needs, it may have been provided by other agencies.
Supports, yeah.
Yeah, and now those agencies are either less effective or gone, it's not available to those students. So now we have a student who is unable to access the curriculum connected to something that they would have been serviced through another agency, and so now we have to pick pieces. Uh, and that becomes expensive, it's the cost of permanent to, to the schools, and it's, it's outside of what originally our coordination was, uh but now it has become embedded.
Uh, so, you know, in terms of to help with the budget and help with the expense side, there's things you can certainly leverage. Technology helps tremendously, uh more support staff always helps. Inclusive practices is stuff we're always working on. Well, need here in systems of support, so really identifying bands of students that the support they need is important. Um, social emotional learning programs also helps us keep kids in district, and although it costs money, it does, I believe, help keep our costs down, and it's also good for our kids, good for our schools. Um, us being our behavior specialists, those folks are invaluable in helping operate our schools. So I think the more we leverage that, the more we invest in that, yes, the budget does go up, but I think in the long run, you have better schools and maybe our costs actually go down in terms of, yeah, just for example. So, that's what I got for special ed finance. Thank you.
The last page here, when you have, I don't, I just made Brian put it in this page here, tell us what the tuition's are. Out of state placements, I mean, some of them, most expensive one, a hundred seventeen, a hundred sixty-seven thousand, so.
That's just tuition, that's annual service. Yeah, it's on, extra services.
Or transportation.
Right. These are all places where, right now, we send kids, just.
We're not limited, that's, it's only, that's New Hampshire, those are New Hampshire approved programs. All of them, we don't send kids to all those, all those, we send the some, and then we have some students who are out of state.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome, Nancy.
Good suggestions, something.
Yep, yep.
So we appreciate being here with us today. Thank you.
If you have any time, if you have questions, I'll do my best to run down the answer.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay.
Yeah, it's a long, I just want to turn to kind of set the stage for where we're going next. The group had a conversation about how you, because I think you're still feeling out, um how you want, how you ultimately, Big Rock, want to think about the guidance we received from the council. Um, so what we have been doing is, uh behind the scenes, we've been working hard and it's taken a little while. Is uh, you guys know the deal, eighty percent of what we do is people. Uh, and so if we're going to hit the type of numbers, if we were to decide that we were going to pursue the type of numbers were part of the city council's guidance, uh inevitably that leads to some conversations about folks who we, we might not be in an opportunity to offer justice. Uh, the, there are, um, some of our associations, we need to notify people just prior to the end of the school year, um some of our support staff positions. Uh, but with teachers, we need to let people, people, it's actually a teacher, it's all members of the Association of Portsmouth Features APT. Who, most of our certified professional staff have our April one uh notification uh deadline. Uh, so what we've been doing, because uh I think we talked about this before too, is there's a process inside the CVA which has not been utilized before, because pull it off without it, they haven't had, they haven't had type of requests from city council that would lead to a large potential scale of layoffs that would maybe be necessary. Uh, so we've had to uh make sure that we utilize this process, which was a, a three-tier rubric of stuff that included uh folks, um how many years they've been teaching, and what they're doing. Uh, how many years overall seniority they have in the district, so maybe you repair first and then you became a teacher. And then um, and then a section on um that has some requests about things that you've contributed over the last three years uh to the district, so we put that out to staff, we had, you know, like ninety seven percent
Yeah.
return for people, we're tracking down a few people, but um and then we've had our administrative uh group of our administrators doing double scoring, um so we have some inter uh inter-rater liability. Um, and now we've taken that, that information and pushed it back into our lists, and we're looking at groups of roles. Um, like a, a math teacher, seven to twelve, you have to be certified in order to do that work. And so within that group, what are the sco- the kind of um RIF scores for people in, in each of those groups? So we've been, we're working on that right up until quarter six.
Yes.
Um, and I'm pushing that information back out to principals now to say, this is what it looks like. Uh, let me know if there, if people are identifying uh any problems. Uh, and then we're working on some models about what tiers, if, if to give you kind of a picture of what like, what would be, um, you know, if you wanted to come in at a three and a half percent increase from the previous year, right now, actually, Brian just did another round of uh combing through on non-personnel uh expenses, and we just pulled, it was another hundred and thirteen, almost fourteen thousand dollars. Ouch, we'll come back the next time we meet, to specifically lay out for you, here are the lines, that those things, we assume we can do that. Uh, we'll be able to identify those lines, you know what non-personnel lines were affected. Um, and then we'll ultimately, I think that I assume what you're gonna want to need is, you're gonna want us to be like, well, if we had to cut folks, what are you cutting? And who are those folks, and what is the impact? I don't, I hate to do that, because I think it has long-term impacts on folks that we're talking about that maybe we're not gonna cut. Um, but I also am assuming you're gonna need to see some of that stuff in order to jostle with what you think's appropriate in terms of what you want to um potentially send city managers, your, is your official proposal. Um, so we're working through those scenarios now. My goal, not my goal, the administrators know that we want to have commerce, anybody who we think their position because of their seniority, that they could personally be affected by a dialogue that we're gonna have in public, that they absolutely need to hear from us first. You know, their principal mean, uh sitting down, just saying, we need you to know that in an upcoming meeting, we're gonna have a conversation that could go around, we're talking about something that could impact your job. Um, and we don't want them to hear that through the room, hey, did you see the meeting last night? I think your job could be, be discussed, kind of, so we're up to the point now where um as we wrapped up this stuff and in principals just start double checking, where I can um kind of get back to principals, talk about how do we turn around those conversations? And at least that kind of first tier offering of, of dialogue, um prior to the next time you meet. So that then we're in a position to say, look, if you were gonna go this far, this is what this will look like. Um, this is our best recommendation based on those things.
Byron, Lisa, Brian, Kerry.
So, as I understood it, there's sort of at the individual level, there's consideration around seniority, there's some narrative around impact, and they're bringing together, it's like, what's in their CVA and how they describe that.
Yep.
Um, and then there's sort of groups of roles.
That's your.
Um.
Based on the certification required to perform.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you, you had an example where it was like math teachers, something.
Yep.
Is there um a methodology into like, of those groups of roles, like which ones are more critical? I think it's, not trying to say, yes, other conversations, so, but what I'm trying to describe is, yeah.
So, um, yes, um, the I think the, that I don't want to share that methodology yet, because people will start spinning tomorrow, thinking that methodology means I don't have a job.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, I will say that that will, compared to some of what we do sometimes, not all of it will be there'll be some hard data connected to some of that, and some of it could be around judgment. So uh, so won't, you know, it's not necessarily going to be an algorithm that pops out.
Sure, yeah, I'm just trying to understand, like, it isn't, it's entirely seniority impact, right, there is.
It's not just seniority, it's not just like, here are all the professionals in the district, here are the lowest, here are the lowest five people regardless of what they do. That's not what it is, it's based on these buckets of certification.
And when you come to us with um what those potentials might be, if they're gonna be, in the, in the last session, it was, it was sort of the inverse of the better, which was like, if we spent, we had three point eight, or there was like different Yeah, in terms of like, whether it's, it'd be sort of the team, uh.
So I'm trying to, so I would say, so as we're working through again, I don't want to spend the whole workforce up into it, uh, that's busy right now, but as we're, as I'm looking at it, I'm trying to decide, what do I think is the responsible, what's the responsible set of things to bring to you? Um, cause there are, I mean, I could game it out to, city council says we want zero. And we want you to absorb the cost of any, any anticipated uh contract negotiations. Um, and I don't think that's a useful exercise, I, I've done it. Finished it, and I don't think it's a useful exercise, because it's prima facie ridiculous. Like, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to function, core functions wouldn't work, because we have so many people we've got to, and we're talking, uh it's four. We would have to find a way, based on what we say is our level budget service, to reduce close to four point four billion dollars. Uh, so, it's a, it's, it's a unbelievably large swath of people. Ultimately, when city council had their conversation about zero, they didn't necessarily articulate whether or not it would be an expectation of if the city does have a contingency fund connected to contract negotiation. So that wasn't part of their discussion at all, from what I saw on the night that they put up guidance, uh, the, they also, I think I didn't hear except for, except for one city councilor, this, like, we should have a zero budget. I heard it would be good for the public to be educated as to what a zero budget would be. So, I, I think I would encourage you as we consider how to, and then they got into this two point nine percent thing. And then even the two point nine percent, is it two point nine percent, then we'll fill out the conversations, I think it wasn't clear that night, was two point nine percent a two point nine percent increase from the previous year with the contingency fund picking up whatever's gonna happen in connection with collective bargaining? Or was it, we need you to also uh eat the collective bargaining costs inside of the two point nine percent uh increase? And is a two point nine percent increase a guide that's not really hard, and really, a three eight is fine? Uh, as long as we can justify, right, so I think those are the scenarios, I would encourage I think that the zero, us having a conversation where I came in with a list that I had to roll out on a scroll of all the people we'd have to cut in order to get a zero, I think is a I don't think it's a helpful exercise, uh, cause I think it has real-world impact on our workforce. Uh, because, you know, those people, two things happen, one the people who um, depending on how that list is set up, they're like, they, they might people might leave, we don't need to leave, to go seek another job, while we, because we have to tell them in April that where we're at, and the city council doesn't resolve until June. Um, the other is, some people, a lot of those people might stay, but we'll have this kind of this thing, it's a lingering thing that's left over on, I, you know, I don't know to what extent can I trust that this is a safe place to work? Uh, and once you damage that, you know, that has impacts. Uh, and so, so my desire is to be responsible and give you what you need in terms of uh making a decision based on our best advice around what those, what those things would look like. But also just be, and I, I'll be transparent with whatever you want me to do. Um, but I'm very worried about like, ah, let's just see the whole thing. I, I think, ah, let's just see the whole thing, if we did that, has all kinds of really tough um, things that will have, will, will negatively impact our ability to deliver the quality of service that we hope to continue as we go forward.
Lisa.
One methodology question, which I think I understand, but I just want to make sure I understand the point. So once you get through that list, if you're in a position where it looks like the numbers are with, are with the council, then you gave the example of people who are certified seven through twelve, and so would you then offer some sort of early retirement? And I guess, I guess I'm trying to understand, are we first having to go with, will people somehow be motivated to volunteer, or are we looking more at a situation where we simply have to you know, unfortunately draw the line through the?
Yes, both.
Is it like offering operations to that, or?
So, um, so, so, um, so I think be, over the next couple of days need to develop what a potential buyout package would look like for uh for staff uh who are, who are leaving, this, the, the amount of money that we'd be talking about, the amount of time that would be distributed over. And uh who would be eligible um to uh to to take that buyout. Um, you know, obviously for us as an institution, it's we, we're gonna, it's gotta be people who are paid more, that we're looking to to have, maybe leave a year earlier than maybe they were gonna leave otherwise, or things along those lines in the, in the effort to uh not have to lay off as many people as we may have. Uh, and I, you know, I would be surprised because of the very short timeframe that we're talking about for people to make a pretty substantial financial decision for them and their families. Um, how many folks are gonna be able to turn around to us, even if we put it out this week, and say, and say by April one? I'm, I'll take the buyout. Uh, and maybe we get those folks, and depending on the nature of the package, maybe we get those folks, but we also want to make sure that the package itself also doesn't create more costs than what we're, you know, potentially saving at the same time, and, and then we've got the money. Ideally, you know, we've got the money from uh, it, it maybe even since fiscal year to offset the ones that we've taken care of. I don't think any more constants next, anyway, so those are all things we're working on, I don't, I would be surprised if that then leads us into a situation where we would, it would all be based on buyouts, we'd have the list. If, if we're talking, if we're hitting any version of what I just laid out in terms of what does the council need? Um, you know, I, I don't see us hitting any of those numbers without. Hitting any of those numbers without some layoffs, even with a buyback.
One other question, and this is mostly a school question, but kids working in their classes.
Yep.
And have traditionally been told what you put on that request is the only stuff you can choose. Is there gonna be some sort of down the line option for students to make different? Selection.
Yeah, we haven't.
I know, I know it's like really premature, but for kids that could make a big difference.
I I, we haven't talked about that, but I would say theoretically, I mean, we would need to, if if suddenly. What ends up happening in terms of makeup of the teaching force of the high school was to shift some radical way, I think would be. Reasonable for us to try to make adjustments. Uh, I don't, we haven't gave that out, and it's hard to know, there's so many variables. Um, but uh, but I think we would wanna be in a situation where students to to the extent to which possible. You know, students are not impacted, I think, you know, the other thing I think it's important for for you to hear and then the council, the community here. Is, you don't cut. The types of money we're talking about from, you know, from these budgets and and not have it have a negative impact on. On services, like this is, schools will not be. Will not be the same schools they were if you lay off five, ten people or twenty and thirty people. They're they're not gonna be the same, that's not gonna be made up through uh efficiencies or creative thinking. And for every, there will be lesser service, um, and especially at the front, because this is is done in a way where it's happening fast. And who's gonna take a buyout, is we, there's some limitations we can have that, we can't totally control it, so then we'll have. There's all these things that we'll need to adjust to if there's layoffs, uh, within certain job categories that will mean. Some people will work in one job location, and maybe maybe they've been a high school teacher the whole time. But the low person um in terms of the RIF score is somebody at the middle schools, and now somebody who's a high school teacher will be. You know, involuntarily transferred to the middle school, uh, or vice versa. Uh, people will be moving between buildings and spaces, um, and um. And that has impacts on school cultures that have been developed over time, so all of this is, will be challenging, we will of course do, um. Yeah, we're gonna, you know, you got good people who work for you, and everybody's gonna work hard to make it the most successful. You know, transition that we have, whatever that's gonna be, um, but I, but I, but I do. I do wanna avoid the conversation, which is, oh, we can just make up all the difference through. Uh, sit, I know, efficiencies and synergy and and creative thinking, it's, it will have an impact, it will be negative. Uh, and then we'll do the best we can to 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 provide um as high quality of service as we did before. Um, but we we won't be all the way there because we won't have the resources to do it.
Brian and then Carrie.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm just, I was just thinking about what you said, you know. Me, it's the way you're articulating it, is there's no fat trend, that's kind of what you're saying.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's, I mean, is there, is there stuff that we can do, or can we become more lean over time?
Yeah.
Yes, we can, there's ways to do that, um, this. Some of the the time and contractual constraints of this process right now may affect. Uh, that doesn't mean that, you know, but there's there's stuff we can do, we can always get more efficient, I just don't think that the, the way. We're not able to go in with a scalpel. And, you know what I mean, so, so there'll be fallout, uh, as we go, uh, and. And so, this is different if we're, you know, if we're having this conversation fall in anticipation of the next budget season. It would be like, okay, here's how we're gonna structure our buyouts, here's how we're looking at particular things, we're already kind of building kind of the, this, uh. What this different thing is gonna look like, I'd be more. Excited about those prospects, yeah, you know, maybe, but.
The way it first, for me personally, I mean, you know, I'm gonna be putting the. I'd be voting for losing nobody, you know, um, at the end of the day, but. Unless you told me, yes, there's the three people or whatever, then I, and I don't think that either is appropriate, but. You just said it's gonna, it's gonna affect services negatively, right? So, I mean, um, I think we saw the, all the. You know, the numbers that have been really good, um, coming out of COVID with the test wars and it just kind of, um. You know, I know we wanna be physically responsible, and that's what you're trying to do.
Yeah.
Where with this exercise, but also we wanna take care of our kids at the same time, you know? And I I just feel remiss to not point that out, like. You know, this is gonna affect kids as well as teachers and our ability to hire in the future and all all kinds of other issues. Uh, and the damage is somewhat done a little bit, even if.
Yep.
They say, yeah, okay, you don't have to lay anybody off, the damage is kind of done. In that respect, so, I mean, I, that's what I'm gonna be pushing for. Uh, cuz I think that's the right thing to do, now whatever the city council ends up doing, and I'm gonna stand up and sit council. And we just have to, you know, as a board, make a decision what we think is right to do now, if it's to cut. And to uh, to do this, then so be it if everybody votes that way, but um, I'm not voting that way.
Carrie. Um, in the, and and I understand what you just said about efficiencies and that little cuts, and I appreciate that. Right, you're, you guys are working that work, but has that, I mean, and I'm going through a similar process in my paid job, but. Is there, are, have we reached out and really like solicited, like, hey, guys, we wanna work better together? And what can we do, like, cuz I guess what I'm, I'm a little worried about just hearing that it's happening at this level. Um, in that there's not opportunities for staff to voice concern about some, um. efficiencies and that they're coming out through other channels, social, like there, there's a lot of. I think there needs to be an opportunity cuz I think it's bubbling up in other places.
So, talking more, if if the process, I would definitely not advise this, if the process is, hey. Everybody in the organization. Um, we might need to make some reductions. So we're gonna do a board listening session for any employee who wants to come and talk about other things they think. I think that's a disaster. If that's, I don't know if that's what you mean, so.
I think there's a different, I think there's a different approach that isn't bad, but is about, um. A- about some. Sorry, I'm trying to parse words, some of them. So let's say we're all teaching together and I teach, or I'll give you my UN checks. So I'm teaching four sections of two hundred person classes, Brian's teaching four sections of six people classes. Um, so like, there's, there's equity and there's efficiencies that can be balanced. I think my worry is without giving people an opportunity to have that, I think that. There's not an all hands on deck approach to like, hey, we all have a role, let's figure out how we can make this work, and I know that's a really. Sensitive topic, but I'll just park that there, my other. So I I guess, and and I, and this might be more of a Nancy question, but I think it's. I think it's really important that we ask the council for time on their agenda as soon as possible. Um, because I think that before these processes are in the focal point, um. We really need an opportunity to present what a continuing services budget is and what that will mean, but also that. I I think part of what I'm leaning from tonight is that with these cuts. We may be looking at a huge long-term investment in out of district placements. Because we don't have the intervention teams and we don't have the, so I think the short-term savings is a real big marker of having. Exponential out of district costs later on, and so I don't think that affects any other department in the city in the same way. Um, I don't think the city incorporates costs and is legally mandated to take them, so. I know that it's not a traditional thing, but I think it's reasonable to say we have to respond to our team by April first. And so we need to be on the agenda in March to talk about this, to get further guidance from the council. Um, so I don't know what the council says, but I would like to advocate for that too.
Into that, I don't know if you have any opinion about that, it's never been done before, as far as I know, but that's not to say that it couldn't happen.
I'd say this is my first trip I've been in where there haven't been joint sessions. Before, you know, not at this point, cuz we're so far in the process, but yearly, we would have meetings with budget committees and. So like boards and all, just so you could all get on the same page, understand what each other does. You're in a small town, it's, it's, hey, I got, I know when I was in the West River, we're like, hey, we have a middle school on the ballot, big fifty million dollar middle school. And town said, well, we wanted a library, I'm like, no, you probably wanna put it on the same year as the school, so, and we ended up working that out, actually. Worked out different school, not so much the libraries, but, um, but in that communication starting at an early part. Sometimes break down some of those boundaries you have as far as, you know, everything just kind of was just a boggling time, timing was. Not good for anything this year, just what it is, what it is.
Thanks, and that's how this ball is done, though, you know, so it's why we can't do it separately. I have a couple of things, um, maybe first, it's just kind of following up when um councillor Cook was in here a few weeks ago. Um, did you ever follow up with the, like, the class limit she said? Um, and that is.
Give you, and I, and I have, as part of that, my plan was for the next meeting TBA to have Steve actually come in.
Okay.
Some of those things.
Perfect.
Um, but, uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, the other thing is, and I know you've given this number before and I apologize.
Yes.
But to get to the two point nine that the city council wants us to get to, how much money are we looking to cut?
So. Can Brian correct me on anything that I went off, so from our proposed budget, which.
Which is four point nine now.
Um, it would be, it was, um, one point three and change. Then, this is, by the way, this is if we don't, this is if the, the, whatever comes out of collective bargaining stuff goes, comes from the contingency. Uh, the contingency fund. Um. Usually how it goes. So, um, so if that's the case, then at one point, you know, one point three change, as I said, this is after a couple call throughs, the latest one, though. Brian pulled another almost a hundred and fourteen thousand out, that gets us down to about one point two. Um, and, um, and so, so we have worked on some some scenarios. That involve personnel that would get us to one point two million dollars reductions from the current. Um, from the current proposal, then if they, if the, the, um, if the city said. We want you to cover. You know, anticipate uh the cost of living adjustment, that's in, that's in line with ten year rolling average, uh, we want you to build that in. What you do, but then we would push up to two six. Two point six million in productions from the existing uh proposal. Uh, and if the, under the zero plan, if they went zero, it's about four point five million dollars. reductions to do the.
I'll never vote for a zero.
But the zero is off the table, correct? I mean, there are two point nine, right now, there are two.
So they wanted to see, this is to not to us, but to the city manager, um, they wanted to see a two point nine, they wanted to see departments. I think, well, the manager would come back with a two point nine percent, um. Budget, um, in that departments should be in line, I think it was language, departments should be in line with that, but ultimately, the manager needs to come back. With an overall two point nine, and we wanna see what, we wanna see a zero.
Well, I agree with Tish, we're absolutely not even gonna consider a zero.
It's, I do have a couple more things too. So, um, I did have a, a um, city resident approach me. Um, asking, because they had worked at another school district, um, down south. And, um, they had to cut as well, and he said one of the first things they did. Cuz he asked me, he's like, what is the athletic transportation budget? Ours right now, between the middle school and the high school is a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars.
Yep.
So. And I, believe me, I am not in favor of of any of these extracurricular activities.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, that was, that was just something that was brought up.
Two, so two thoughts.
You mean being cut, didn't they cut it?
No, yes.
No, you said, I'm not in favor of any of these extracurricular activities.
Oh, being high, oh, no, 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 please, no one call me, I'm like, I knew.
They're already, they're already lining up.
Oh my gosh, yeah, I'm getting texts and emails, I don't know, I, now, I, I, as a sportsman high graduate, I know what. The athletics means to the, and I hundred percent, hundred percent support. But, um, transportation, other school districts do the pay to play where you.
Yeah.
Pay and.
So I would say in terms of kind of the methodology that I've been working on, and I'll come back to you guys with. I. Um. You know, you have kids who really need to participate in those things, and when you create a financial barrier. For students to participate in those activities, they're so meaningful for for kids, I just think for the money. For the money connected to it. Um. I think it's just a hard fact, I don't know, it would not be what I suggest.
I felt I had to bring this.
I totally appreciate it, and and our community is very close to us.
Yeah.
Where that's the case, paying a couple hundred dollars to play whatever the sport is, you know?
Right.
Uh, but it's, I will tell you that that that. Athletics is not totally off the table, but like the transportation, or sometimes communities, the, um. Sometimes superintendents or boards will play games, but like, well, seems like we're gonna have to cut the football team this year. Because it's such deep cuts and, you know, and I understand why people do that, because they say what's more important? Football or what we're doing in our classrooms, sometimes.
It's all.
Too much, it's all. Um, and I, you know, I think typically that does not play well in communities, and usually communities are resentful of. Looking at that as a political tactic against people.
So, I I felt I had to bring that.
I I totally appreciate what you're saying, but I would say I, there's, um, I'm not saying there's nothing that I'm gonna bring you that's not connected to athletics, but. But, um, but not those types of things.
Um, and this is my last thing, and I promise.
No, go ahead.
So, what I'm looking at in just the special ed out of district budget, it has increased. One point three and change.
Yep.
Which is something we have no control over, we have no say over, we have to pay this, there's no wiggle room. I feel that making the certain cuts that are being made to make an effort to cut any. Fat or whatever, however it's being worded, um. I, I agree with Brian that, I mean, just looking at this as an argument of. We haven't increased anything else that wasn't contractual or. And this is, this one point three million is out of our hands. There's no, we can't even look at this as a way of cutting. And that increase due to federal and state laws, we have to abide by it. So I do agree with cutting what we can, um, without being so drastic that our kids are being. Affected on their day-to-day life, that I, I don't see how we could get to a two point nine nine. And and I don't think I'd be in favor of voting for one. With, I mean, with this argument alone, and and that's an argument I would bring up in front of the city council, given the chance. Is that we, without hurting our kids and ultimately the community, we can't be at a two point nine nine.
I agree. And and additionally, that that could lead to additional investments that are required and legis, like, that were required to pay. Have we gotten, saw, are we inferring this from the conversations, or did we get any communication that was like, you need to have an X budget? Where this is, like, did we get anything from council or city manager?
So councils, on record, you can, what, there's a video when the night they gave the.
Okay.
They gave.
Point nine.
And the two point nine comes out of that, um, we've had, and then we had, um, one. Uh, one specific conversation directly connected to the fallout of, of the, or the. Connected with the manager and with the deputy manager finance around, um, how we should interpret. What the, what that guidance was, my read of that, no, they're mischaracterizing, it was basically that we need to do our best to hit the two point nine. Um, and so there was some, there was a little bit of wiggle in there, um, but, um, but, but I think. You know, it was, you need to do your best to hit the two point nine percent. And, uh, yeah.
Oh, I just have a few things.
Oh, I just have a few things. About years ago, we offered the early retirement, I think we did it two or three times in my whole tenure here. And, and basically what it was, was, and I don't have these numbers right, but it was something like, if you work for the district for ten years. You could retire and have a ten thousand dollar bonus. If you worked for fifty, I'm getting these numbers wrong, but twenty years, you'd get fifteen thousand. In twenty five years, you'd get whatever it was, and we always would get a few.
Yep.
It wasn't a lot, but we always got a few, so it can work to save a little.
And I, and I do anticipate that we will. Be able to offer, we will be able to offer something to folks. Okay, but it's a short, a short window.
Right, and you gotta do it quick, if you want to.
Oh, no, it's, it's, no, we're, I mean, it's the type of thing. Uh.
You gotta give them time to think about it.
Where, you know, and I'm assuming, uh, in terms of doing it quick, that I would not, I would not be waiting. To come back and have a conversation with all of you to, to kind of approve it. Uh, we would look to see what, what do we think we are able to, able to afford, based on the combination of this year and rolling into the next. And then build something around that, because they definitely hear, you know, I hear, I think pretty much a consensus around, we want to do that, we want to offer that opportunity. In the, in the hopes that, um, we give some people, you know, an opportunity they might be excited about, about wrapping up a little earlier than they thought. And then, uh, and the ability to retain some other staff as a result.
And then one year, I proposed pay to play to school board, I did all kinds of research about all these communities around here that did pay to play. We voted, I was the only one that voted for it, the other eight boards voted against it, so I don't think pay to play, well, that was. Two years back, but, you know, a lot of communities do it.
They do.
A lot of communities do it.
I just. I don't know, I feel like if it would happen, be. That people would come and restore it.
Well, and that, that was a suggestion.
Like, what was, you know, six, yeah, who needs pay for it, like, oh, yeah.
So we had it all figured.
I, I think my concern from the equity standpoint is just. Those types of systems still require a kid to say, people always say, oh, we can copy you, we can copy you. And it's that, it's that, the, that invisible wall of like, I have to come and ask you, this big.
As soon as there's a fee, there's going to be kids who just don't sign up.
You don't, yeah.
And we've already lost people because they can't afford it.
I mean, and it, it has been proven that these extracurricular.
Enormous.
It's enormous, especially some of these kids that are great at sports, they could be looking at scholarships because of. Now, so that gives them the opportunity to go on. And again, I support, I support our, our sports enforcement.
Thank you, Tish. Um, the last thing I was going to say is I think I'm going to support a four point nine percent. That's what we think we need to have our schools the best that they can have, similar to what Brian said, and. I think we should just stick with it. Brian was able to find a hundred fourteen thousand, so deduct that from four point nine and tell us what the percentage is for the point. Okay.
But now, now.
I am not going to vote to lay off teachers, especially after those scores the Patty just gave us. When you look at the US News and World Report, we are, we have the top schools in the state of New Hampshire. I think we should be, I think we should go for this. If you can find a little bit more in there, Brian, get us down a little bit more, that'd be great, but I don't think we should lay off anybody. I don't, we need those people, we've proven that to have the quality schools that we have, we need those people.
That's just my opinion. I would, I would agree, and I think that, I think if there's going to be a line to walk around, you know, here's what we've been able to trim, this is what we're. I mean, four point, whatever it was, something is going to be our recommendation. Um, every scenario, you're, the two point nine scenario means X, Y, and Z, and so we're going to be notifying those people. On April first that their position may be in jeopardy. Depending on the findings of that, like, so I think part of it is. That framing of that, and I, I think that's why we need to push for a meeting before April first.
Now, if you remember last year, I asked if we could meet individually with city councils. And I was told by Susan Morell that that was not a good idea, that we shouldn't do that.
Well, and that's why the public meeting, getting, getting us scheduled and.
We could do that.
I'll be on their agenda, I mean, I think we need to.
Or if not, we all just go for public comment, we can't get on the agenda.
But, um, okay, I'll do it.
I mean, you can always do public comment.
Right.
That's true too.
But if they're on the agenda, we have more time.
Yeah, I'll look at, I can definitely, I'll talk to Declan tomorrow, if you see him in the friendly.
My child doesn't go to school anymore, she's been sick for three months, so, you know, she's.
Okay, so I'm going to tread lightly here, um, and I don't want, but I, I want to like. I'm a person that needs to be very rounded in, um. Like, actual numbers, okay, so, one of the things I've been struggling with, with, and this is, we've been talking about this before, is. The other funds and the FTEs that are in there. The reason that's particularly difficult is because there are voices in the community. That want to know what the FTEs are now and what they were, and yes, that trend has been.
Yes.
And because it's not transparent, it's a trap of like, who has worked for the district the last five years, it's an impossible question, right? From, from my perspective.
I don't know, no, right, right.
Uh, we have the budget for the last five years, but the FTEs in twenty nineteen, twenty were three seventy nine, and they're three eighty four now. But I have no, that doesn't mean that that's the number of people who worked for the district.
But, you know.
So.
So.
Um, and so I'm just like. Uh, it would be really helpful to know, okay, so, oh, that's, that's the, that's like a true state of play, right? The other state of play, um, is the, is the cost per pupil costs going back, so we go back. And they were around nineteen thousand, um, five years ago, and they're up to like twenty five thousand.
Twenty one?
But that was, no, that was the average in the state, so, and, and this is my rough math, which is like total number of students, total budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and so that, and the percentage increase. Of those, of the cost per pupil over that period of time is sort of out of line with, um, like. With CPI, which is like the inflation, which is, but essentially what the council was talking about when they're talking about two point nine, one of the prices of inflation.
Yes, that's what they're saying.
Um, which is where that number came from, it's not based on, uh, services needed, or what could need, it's based on. What the inflation number is, which is not entirely arbitrary, but it is niche faced, right?
And informed, to be fair to them.
Yeah.
And informed by them here, constituents as a result of reevaluation. That, um, chunks of the community, their, um, property taxes going up.
Yeah.
I think they said six hundred, six hundred dollars on average, some people way more.
Yeah, so the, well, that's the, yeah, I mean, that's the, what I, what I, what I want to do is, or is like the narrative sort of, when I, when I'm thinking about talking to council. Is eliminating the things that I, that we don't have control over, so we don't have control over the. Tax burden shifting commercial residential property, that's something that the school district has. School district doesn't have control over out of district placement costs, I mean, to some degree, there's agency in terms of like negotiating, but really, that's a down. So those are things in my mind, but, um.
Reversable costs.
Yeah, reversible cost stuff, absolutely, yeah. So it's like trying to remove those variables and chip away in terms of, um, what you guys do, so I just want to. Um, sort of, these are things that I'm thinking about in terms of tax state of play. Um, and I think what we want to, well, what I want to argue for. Is that, um, continue, even with all of that, um. That this is what we want to do, right, that this is, uh, we want to spend the money. Um, uh, and I don't even think we're necessarily, um. You know, a lot, there's, there's needs across districts, right, and ultimately, um, we can invest more, um, in, in different ways. So it's, it's just all, I want to be, when we talk about to the council, I want to be clear in terms of, um. How much things have increased, but ultimately, that's to the benefit of the community. Through the, what we're seeing from Patty in terms of the, uh, scores, um. So anyway, that's just all, all to say that, um.
So what number would you come in at? Do you have a number in your head? Because you do so great analysis.
Well, the problem I, I, what I was, what I was trying to, what I was trying to hope for is that I could understand FTEs, but I couldn't understand that because I.
So, so here's what I'm hearing, so I'm hearing from the stuff that you're, I'm sorry, just taking notes, yeah, so want to be able to understand. The actual size of staffing over the last five, at least five.
Ten years.
And what's been the trend, ten, right?
Yeah.
Um, what's been the, what's been the trend in overall staffing, regardless of, of, um, revenue sources?
Yeah.
Um, uh, now, it might be good to couple that with what's been going on with revenue, because we've got an increase in revenue, we want to tell that story too.
Absolutely.
Um, cost per, the evolution of cost per pupil over the last five to ten.
Yeah.
Uh, years, uh, in relation to, probably, you didn't say this, but, so in relation to CPI. In relation to what's the trend in state.
Yeah.
And how do we relate, kind of, in almost like a percentile rank compared to other districts around the state?
Yeah.
Are we, are we, where are we just overall, and what's the trend in terms of what's happening?
Yes.
Um, somewhat, and then. Some other drill down on what are the costs that we are in the most direct control of?
Yeah.
And what is happening with those costs?
Sure.
Are we, the things that we really fundamentally can just make decisions about? Are we deciding to spend more, are we spending less, are we got even, where are we?
Right, because the narrative is, on, on these terms of the, those who would say that we need to reduce these services. That we are increasing the number of positions in an inordinate way relative to the services that we're providing. And I don't think that's the reality, but it's difficult and it's noisy with all those costs that we can't, we can't.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we knew that, and we knew that, that there was two, we were having this conversation, and we were talking about two oh six and two oh seven.
Yeah.
And, well, in all the different threads, but particularly two oh six and two oh seven, was, this is going to muddle some of the conversation a little bit. For exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So, um, but I think we're, you know, if we had the ability. And I don't, we'll see what we have the ability to reconstruct from even, once you go back five, more than five years from. We don't know what's going to be available to us, but as we try to construct it, it's, I could almost see like, uh. Here's a thread of the number of people that were being funded under IDA, here's a number, here's a total number of people.
Yeah.
And then, I, I think I talked about this, Brian and I talked about this, well, like, it's, it's almost like it's just a stacked bar graph, it's total number of people, ID, no. Total number of people, Fund eleven, IDA, um, uh, you know, uh, two oh seven, but really two oh seven as a tuition. Based thing, you know what I mean, it's like the stacks, and you can kind of see the trend over time and what's happening. Uh, and that can be a good discussion and make sure that what we believe is true is actually true.
So if we came up with all of that, would you have a number?
Would, based on, based on what the data tells.
Would we all have a number? If we could come up with all of that, I don't think that comes to the number, that gives me the argument for the four point something.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
We'll see what we can use.
My request to those. Can you add, yeah, well, first of all, Lisa go, oh, Brian, Byron, are you finished?
Yes, that was, same thing.
Lisa, and then Karen.
They were already stated, all right, but just like the Medicaid schools reimbursement, what we're filing for, what we're getting over the past five years. All of those things are exactly in line with what Byron just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you get those?
Yeah, it's just the different revenue streams, and like, what, what's happened with those revenues?
Pupil from those revenue streams.
I can assume.
So.
Yeah, let's look at the real data.
I'm, I'm very excited to visualize these.
Well, and we're all excited about it, and, and Brian C is like, making about. How is he putting it all together? When we have access to, what do we have access to, and what's going to be more opaque, once we start digging, we go, start going back in time?
And she's going to make an SDK for us online and run all the numbers. Yeah, they're going to do it together.
Byron, can you do that?
An SDK and one.
Right now, Karen.
Lisa, so I think, I mean, first of all, I agree with everyone else, it'd be two point nine is just not realistic. For where we want our kids to have the full range of quality educational opportunities. I just don't see how we need to be that. I think the one other question that I'm hearing, you know, when I just get my neighbors coming out to share their thoughts. Is that we've lost population.
Yep.
And we haven't really lost a lot of staff over time, is the narrative that I hear, and I don't know that that's even accurate. But that is certainly the people I run into in the neighborhood who ask that question.
Yep.
And I think there's that narrative of like, oh yeah, everybody who was my teacher back in the day is still there. And then we have, and that's probably also not completely true.
Right.
But I keep having some sort of way of countering that. And saying like, look, like, this is like how big our classes are, and like, this is what these teachers are doing, it's going to be really important. You know, so for elementary, we've got a really up to date snapshot of how big the classes are and what everybody's doing, because we just went. But we don't have the same snapshot for middle school or high school, and I feel like that narrative piece. Like, to be like, we're not wasting your money, we are doing these things that are really important with, you know, each of the businesses. And to also tie that with the test, I mean, you don't get better scores by making classes much bigger and taking it ways and forms.
And can I add to what you're saying?
Ripping.
Yeah, to add to what you're saying, um, when, so one of the, one of the things I noticed from when I went to high school. And my kids went to high school, is when my kids went to high school. There is a place, a special track for each student that goes there.
Hmm.
Um, that is one thing that's offered at Portsmouth High, is the many different routes that a, a student can go. That I think, um, and, and you're right, yeah, I, with, um, the residents of Portsmouth saying. The, um, the number of kids is going down, but we're offering so much more for those students. To, um, because high school especially is that place that you. You really start finding your track, are you going to college, are you joining the military, are you going to go to trade school? Um, you know, what are you doing, and we offer all those amounts of. Opportunities for those kids to learn, um, taking any of those away. I, I think would be the detriment of this community, it, it would be taking away what makes this community special. Um, because we do offer those, so, yes, we may have more teachers because we're offering more classes. But I think that's really important for the students in, in.
Great speech of the city council.
In this district.
And I would say just in general, I've gone through a lot of these processes before around reductions. Um, high schools generally are the target, because if you're going to offer, it's round choice, and so. Um, so you will see sometimes some small class sizes. You, once you start pulling people out, the impact is around the, um. The agency we give kids to construct the education they want, and that's where you start to lose, so it's like if you, so if instead of offering. Um, you know, two sections of, uh, of AP, uh, sorry, dual enrollment physics. Um, we only got to offer one, now you have a student who's like, I really, really want to do, um, I'm in band. Big part of who I am and what I do, but, and it's like, well, sorry, the only time that your dual enrollment physics is offered is the same time as band. That's your choice, you're going to make a decision, that's where, when, when you make high school cuts, it's, it's, it doesn't translate the same way. When we were doing our district in conversation. It's a division problem.
Yeah.
With high school, it's, it's three dimensional chess when you do scheduling, and in the, the, the extent to which. You're trying to decide, again, how much agency kids are going to have and the choices about what they want to learn.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, um, you know, and then how do you, how do you staff that in a way that. That allows them to have that agency, and that, and that can be, you know, or, well, and. The, the amount of, um, unique choices that are available, and Portsmouth High is a place where you could do. A lot of unique things, and you can kind of map out path that you want in a lot of ways, it's not perfect, but there are limits to what that is. Um, but, um, but it's, but it's, uh, I know it's a lot more than, than the high school it came from in terms of what was available to. A kid who walked into Portsmouth High.
I think we're very unique, and to lose any of that at the high school level would be, it, it just. It would be taking away from students, for an example, my, my oldest son. It was the choices he was allowed to take in high school that led him to decide he wants to be an engineer. He, that would have been so limited, um, it, by getting rid of any one of the. Um, it, by getting rid of any one of the programs that he might have taken that led him in that direction. Um, which, I mean, I'm speaking personally, but there's so many kids out there that have that experience of just. You know, maybe even taking, uh, um, I don't know, do we have puppeteer classes? Do we use or something? Just something so unique like that?
There wasn't.
Um, that would be fun. But having something so unique like that, that might be a little out of. What, uh, out of the mainstream, that's gonna lead a student to. Like adulthood and what they wanna do and give back to the community. It, it just.
I like what you said, and I think it'd be great in front of the council saying. Um, okay, I was just looking at dates here. We have, our next budget meeting is the fourth of March. We have presenting that.
Right now, I was contemplating, we had.
We have.
We're, it's open based on what you guys had for needs.
Okay.
Um, but then, um, but I thought.
The twenty fifth.
Appropriate for, for Steve to have some conversation with you about, cause the high school thing comes up. And so, you know, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, so do you wanna have him on the fourth?
Um, I just need to make sure he's available. That was my, my intent was to move him in.
Okay, and then we have one more budget meeting scheduled for the twenty fifth of March. We have a meeting on the eleventh, our regular school board meeting. And then I had it down on the twenty fifth of March. That's where we were gonna vote on a budget, correct?
I think eleven.
Oh, okay.
Operationally. And I will tell you, in between, we, we have a follow up conversation with the manager. On the fifth.
About our budget?
About typically, this would be.
March fifth.
Yes, and typically this would be the meeting in a normal cycle. This would be the meeting where we're all done. And we're going to go in and say, you know, this is the proposal.
But we're not voting on it until the eleventh.
Understood. So I don't know.
They're on the fifth.
Well, but that was what we were offered, um, and, but that could be in terms of the, um. In terms of when that was put out, put out by her staff, that could have been connected to assuming that we're on the same schedule as usual.
Okay, well, in the meantime, the city council meets on the third of March, the seventeenth of March. In the seventh of April, but that's not gonna do us any good.
We would, we would have to get on the agenda on the third, I would think.
Right, and then if we can't, can we all go to the public comment on the third and the seventh?
And maybe if that's the case, we all kind of break down different points. So, cause we only have that three minutes.
Vote on it on the eleventh. We could only go to the public comment on the third if we're gonna vote on the eleventh on the budget.
I think after we vote, for sure.
Okay, that's true.
Then it's pretty much.
Right, that's right. Okay, we go. If everybody could just mark down tentatively, March third and March seventeenth to go in the public comment. Before the city council. I will contact the mayor. Actually, I'll see the man tomorrow night. It's that, um, community, what do you call it? Citywide neighborhood, um, I can talk to.
Night out, is it night out?
No, it's. On the ice.
Is there like a, is there like a night out party? It's like a tough night, I'm.
It's the same committee that organizes them. They have meetings throughout the year with different wards. So, so tomorrow night, we're in New Frank. Um. Okay, but everybody marked down March, they're just tentatively to talk before the.
And what other date did you say?
Well, the seventeenth, the month, uh, the third and the seventeenth.
I know, I can't make it on the seventeenth, but I can definitely go on the third.
It's gonna be the celebration of St. Patrick's Day.
No, I, I, it's actually a family tradition. We do do a full St. Patty's Day. Um, it's a tradition I've kept on after my parents are gone.
Good.
Oh, nice. Okay, so.
It's my favorite holiday too, by the way, so.
Now, my other question, when can you get, when can you and Brian get us back all this information that we want?
So.
You know, the reimbursement cost.
We will.
All that stuff that we.
Hard over the next couple of days. Um, my, my, my new, uh, BA. Uh, I wanna be able to allow him a couple of days off next week. Uh, but we will.
You get it to us by March fourth, so we'll have Steve Canosi, Bahasa meeting, and then all of this, all these.
We will do as much as we can. Well, I'll just say this, we'll do as much as we can. I'm not gonna put Brian on the spot, cause he'll say, yes, he can do it if he can. Um, and we'll, uh, we'll figure out, pull together, do it very best, depending what he has to.
Now, are we married to the March eleventh date of approving the budget? Can we go to the twenty fifth of March?
So at some point. Yeah, I would say at some point the manager's office, they're, they're in process, they're finishing up with some of their, the core city department committee. Um, so we're behind, but we're behind because they asked us. Um, and so.
The gig was kind of negotiation.
And even this game, right, we, I think we originally got something in late February.
Just a different. Based on timing. It seems like there's consensus in the room here that we all would like to have a continuing services budget, at least with the, the. That were recently identified. I would be more than happy to vote on that on the fourth. Um.
Okay.
If, I mean, we could add amendments if there's additional changes that come on the fourth. But I think that's in our best interest to get it passed so that if we wanna be on the seventeenth agenda. Or that we're, we're getting to the city council in a formal, official way before April first.
So, it, it, just in terms of being thoughtful about the whole process. So once we have whatever conversation we're having on the fifth. Which is Brian's right, that was negotiated, pushed back over original time with the manager. Uh. You know, she and her staff have to finish putting together what their best, what they believe their best proposal was overall, overall. Council, which the council won't see until the twenty eighth of April. So, just, you know, so is where, so is where we're going.
We have to demand that the process can change, cause it's not gonna work with the timelines and stuff.
Going.
I understand, but when I was on the council, every year I asked, like, have we pushed? In four, and every year they said, this is the way we've always done it. They don't have to approve until June thirtieth. Technically, by law, they don't have to approve until June thirtieth.
And if they don't, by then, then.
Then the city manager's budget becomes the budget.
But the, uh, but they're scheduled right on their schedule, their target date. As the completion of their process.
All right, so everybody have a wonderful. Patient.
Again, you were drunk.
Um, and then we'll see everybody on March fourth. We'll have Steve Canosi and hopefully. A new figure that you and Brian can work out. And, um, I will talk to the mayor tomorrow night and let everybody know. Special meeting, just us with, with the comment we could go.
Hi, we're not looking for the third.
Yeah, well, he's got done it because I might not get him.
Okay.
From the man. But I'll try. Better if I just talk to him without the city manager.